Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here this morning. It is our Tuesday, December 6th City Commission Work Session. We'll call this meeting to order, and if you'll join me, Hillary's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America in two republics which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hillary. So we have our first official new City Commission meeting today. So, welcome, Rob. We'll try not to be too hard on you. You'll do just fine. I don't know if you saw, anybody saw outside, but I think it was you that drove the decorated Christmas golf cart to work.
That fuzzy steering wheel.
Yeah. That was priceless. So it's like when Jeff rides his bike and you see the big bike outside in the helmet. So we have alternative transportation geeks with us. So, welcome. It's a really great day. We're really excited, especially about this next presentation. So Theresa, I'm going to call you forward. We are here to honor someone who is, you know, just sort of part of the fabric of the community, as you know, all of you know. We want to recognize Sergeant Charlie Street for his service to our community, the many, many years of service to this community in so many different ways, but especially in his law enforcement capacities. I'll turn it over to you, Theresa.
Good morning, Mayor. We don't have a live meeting, so. Commission, Theresa Smalling, Director of HR Mismanagement for the City, as well as the City's lead on to the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I have the honor of presenting such a thorough appreciation to Sergeant Charlie Street.
Hit your button. Sorry about that.
Last time they had it. Should I start over?
No.
Okay, thank you. So Sergeant Street has 30 years of service, law enforcement service, to the citizens of Dunedin, as well as the citizens of Pinellas County. He started out at the, as a Dunedin police officer from 1992 until 1995, when the Police Department was disbanded. And then he became a sheriff and served with the Sheriff's Office for 27 years. So we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize his dedication to the citizens of Dunedin. So Sergeant Street, if you would join me at the podium.
And your family, please, because they had to give, too.
Sue and Eric.
Some of them.
Yeah, some of them, I know. There's a lot of them.
So basically, this certificate says, "It's a certificate of appreciation presented to Sergeant Charles Street in recognition and gratitude for his 30 years of law enforcement experience to the citizens of City, of the City of Dunedin and Pinellas County." So thank you very much. And our North District Station Commander, Captain Melvin Jackson, is here, and he's going to say a few words.
Come on down. Welcome.
I stand here.
Yeah, you stay there. You're not going anywhere.
So just to echo the mayor, Theresa, thank you very much for all your dedicated service to this community, to the Pinellas County community as a whole. I'm sure you know, but I'm not sure the majority of this room knows, the impact that you've had on my career personally. I've known Sergeant Street for a very long time, within probably a year or two of me starting here, my career here. He was my supervisor. He took me under his wing. He literally showed me the ropes. Couple of times, he had to tighten me up. I am, I am much, much better for it. And personally, thank you very much for everything that you've done for me, for the community, for the Sheriff's Office. We, we've appreciated from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you, thank you. Thank, I can't say it enough. I appreciate it so much.
And I believe we have one more presentation.
Yes. So, yeah, don't go anywhere. Well, one of the things that I certainly want to say is, you know, not only is it a huge service to the City of Dunedin and Pinellas County for his law enforcement career and putting his life on the line for us. Many of you that might be watching know his service to the community in so many other ways. One of, one of...
Are you okay?
Yeah. One of the, see, still trying to serve.
You're trying to get me going.
One of the official photographers for Everything Celtic, Everything Celtic. Your great involvement in our, supporting our city band, and all of the bands, our school system, our soccer program, and many, many, many other things. I don't know how you did it all. Overachiever. So, on behalf of the City of Dunedin, we would like to present you this. So come on forward. Actually, I'll come down. I think Street Street would have been better. Yep. That would have been great. Just kidding.
Can I put this on our street now? Charlie Street.
So that's for you. You could put it in your backyard, your front yard. You don't need to...
I say a couple of things.
I have a tree behind you, so you guys can...
I'm so sorry.
All right, no, we're going to move that, yes. Charlie, we love you. We do. And we're going to keep seeing you. It's not like we're not going to see you. We're all going to be...
We live in town. We have a golf cart.
Oh. Just make sure you're on the right side of the street and know your crossings, right? I'm sure you've had to deal with that.
It was funny, I was telling Brian Camodecker this morning, the State's Attorney's Office called me the other day. I have a trial coming up that, from a city ordinance violation, no golf cart sticker.
Did you, do you have your golf cart sticker?
Yeah.
Where's George? George, get him his golf cart sticker in case he doesn't have it.
If I could have just a couple...
You, you're going to get a minute, but I, I need, we're not done talking about you. So I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner John Turner.
Well, I like Street Street. So that's a great one, but I like the one you have there, too. So that just, it just encompasses what you've done for the city, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gao.
You guys think I'm everywhere.
You are, you are.
Charlie is certainly everywhere. I first met Charlie in San Jose, so we go back a few years. But, but he really is everywhere. You've, you've mentioned the Scottish. He's one of the few still here and still involved that was under the direction of Sandy Keith. And so...
Pass that back down.
Ah, I got him. So he, he is, he's one to carry on that legacy, and that's always been so wonderful. Just my only real quick story with, with Charlie is I reached out to him a year, year and a half ago. I had some concerns at, at the high school and, and wanted Charlie's opinion on some stuff. And we had decided we were going to meet outside the City Hall. And it was, I can't remember what day it was, in the morning. And we were texting back and forth, "I'm almost there." And then he texted me, "He was going to be late because he pulled over a golf cart." And for the number of residents that say, "We don't do anything as far as enforcing golf carts, et cetera, et cetera," I try and share a story. Oh, you think. There are, there are a number of golf cart owners that are thrilled Charlie's retired. And, and I was honored to attend his retirement party.
You're lucky.
And, and his lovely wife, Sue, sent me an invitation email. And I thought, wow, kind, I'm like nobody in the world of Charlie. So I was really honored to receive it. And it was at, and it was at the Dunedin Golf Club. And I attended, and the entire city was there, the entire law enforcement community was there. It was such an amazing event to hear story after story of, from, especially the law enforcement community, on just his community service, that from my understanding, he is the only law enforcement representative that can actually pull over a jet skier without actually being on a jet ski himself.
Oh, my God.
He just goes out to the shoreline and waves them in. And, and they comply. And that's, that's the power, that's the power of Mr. Street.
Sometimes.
Do the jet skiers are happy he's retiring?
I think the jet skiers are happy. But, but anyway, Charlie, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done in this community, from raising a wonderful family in, in our community, your military service, your law enforcement service, your service back to the community with, with the pipe band, and the number of years. We will get you back. But, but thank you for everything that you have done. Your transition into, into your hobby of photography, and the fact that the mayor is correct. You are Everything Celtic, and, and it's just wonderful to see your photos online. So thank you, sir, for everything you've done for our community.
Commissioner Franny?
Well, I can't compete with that. That was nice. So I will say, if you get pulled over in your golf cart, don't show your retired badge or anything. Bad joke, right? Bad joke. Sorry.
Too soon.
I couldn't resist. So Charlie, obviously, you know, we go back to Dunedin Police Department days, and, and as a staffer involved with the study, and of course, you were an officer, one of the biggest fears of Dunedin residents by going to the sheriff was that we wouldn't keep our hometown feel, that there wouldn't be that personality between the officers and the citizens. And, and you just, you know, you stand in the stead of that and, and defy that. Because again, you know, I think you are certainly an example of someone that showed that that wasn't going to happen. You know, that personality could be here, that feeling of Dunedin could be here, and I thank you for that. But you, I thank you for your service, and so many good things. I mean, it's, it's just funny, all the stories of people that would, you know, in some way have a connection to you, and, and you made a difference. So thanks for your service.
Commissioner Walker?
Well, Sergeant Street, I just want to let you know that I'm a complete rule follower when it comes to driving a van. And the jet skiers need to be enforced. I so greatly appreciate that, that part of your service. I, I read the, the proclamation here, and I will say that I, I think we all owe you a debt of gratitude for your service and for keeping this community safe for 30-plus years. And I just want to thank you.
It's my turn. I haven't sweated this much since I took off my gear in October. We go back, some of us go back a long way. Commissioner Franny from, from Dunedin days. Commissioner Walker, I don't know you, sir. I wish you all the best. Good luck.
Yeah. Good luck. Good luck with that. That's okay.
City manager came out and rode with me on shift for a few hours, a couple of years ago. And we pulled a golf cart over, driving along the sidewalk on Edgewater Drive. And we also, later in the day, got to run lights and siren all the way up to Innes Brook to back up a deputy. And she got to see how nobody gets out of the way for a plain white Tahoe.
I remember that, yeah.
That was kind of a white knuckle, a lot of fun. Commissioner Toranga, my squad and I helped you out at your residence, wildbacks and teenagers were making themselves at home in your back along the Curlew Creek, and we invited them out and moved them along. And then Jeff and Julie, we go way back, longer than we maybe like to admit. You know, January 6th of 1992, two blocks away, is when I swore in to this job. And, you know, it's funny, I always tell the story, when I was a grow, a kid growing up, I thought it would be the most boring thing to go through school and then live in Dunedin. Oh, you know, I just got to get out of Dunedin, got to get out of Dunedin. But when it was time to get out of the service, this is the only place I wanted to live. The, the only job I wanted to do. And in the 30 years and 10 months I was on the job, Jeff and I were talking not long ago, I did some checking, I think 13 of those years were just working in Dunedin. And, and that was by choice. Including the last five years especially, I was a sergeant in Dunedin. And by then, I was the senior sergeant in the agency. I could just kind of pick wherever I wanted to go. I wanted to finish my career where I ended, where I began it. I was living the dream. One of my favorite things during, during the shift, especially on weekends when it's very crowded downtown, I'd like to park my cruiser and get out and walk around and do the cop on the beat thing. People were always asking me, "Where's this place?" Or, "Where's good food?" Or, "Where's, where can I get this or that?" I love that. I love my city. And it's very humbling to be here today and know that my city loves me back.
We do. That's the problem.
You asked me, and, and I'm, I'll get out of your, I'll get out of your way here. You don't know how I did it as an overachiever. Well, I, I'm not an overachiever by nature. I did it by virtue of the woman that's sitting, sitting behind me and who was standing next to me a few moments ago. I owe everything to my wife, Sue, and my family. She makes me the, the man that I am from the beginning to the end. And people are asking me before retirement, "What are you going to do? What are you going to do?" And I said, "Well, I really had no list of things to do because my time now belongs to my wife."
Good man.
She's working on that list, and it grows.
Good man.
But thank you all very much. I appreciate it. And thanks for everybody who came. There's a lot of, I saw faces here that I hadn't seen for a while and have been missing desperately to see again. So, but thank you all very much. And you're right, I'm not going anywhere.
Y'all don't have to stick around. You can go right out the door.
You're on the branch of the clear sky.
Okay, we might meet you there. Cocktails?
Recession.
Never too early. Okay. All right. Our final presentation is Intergenerational Week Proclamation. I'll turn that over to Commissioner Gao.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up Sandy and Jenny, please. Everybody, if you're intergenerational, come on up. And we, and, and we have to top the presentation of Mister, for Mister Street.
Yeah, it's going to be her.
I hope you've got some great words.
The only thing I can say, as an aside, is I've lived here like 40-some. Thank gosh, I've never had to deal with him.
Yeah.
Not with him or anybody else.
But I will, I will read, Sandy, I'll read the proclamation, hand it over to you, and then the floor will be yours to say what you would like. So here we go with Intergenerational Week 2022. Whereas there are patterns to everything in life, the young and the elderly live and play in increasing different worlds, and the young often find little opportunity for meaningful exchanges with senior adults. And whereas understanding the communication between generations within families, neighborhoods, and communities are critical to meeting individual needs and community challenges. And whereas both young and old have common basic human needs, to feel love and compassion, to be intellectually stimulated, to develop self-esteem, to maintain links between the past and the future, to feel purposeful, to enjoy meaningful relationships, to have a sense of place in society, and to feel competent, worthwhile, and affirmed. And whereas a truly healthy society must be built on a sense of respect for the perceptions and experiences of all citizens, and the joys of joining together and celebrating differences as well as similarities. And whereas the main goal of Intergenerational Week is to encourage intergenerational bonding on an ongoing basis to help our youth understand the needs of our elders and to make an extra effort to engage them in meaningful activities throughout the year, fostering mutual respect, companionship, appreciation, admiration, and a sense of responsibility and belonging. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gao, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the City of Dunedin, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim Sunday, December 4th through Saturday, December 10th, 2022, as Intergenerational Week 2022 in Dunedin, and encourage all citizens to promote intergenerational understanding and acceptance by participating in events, and events such as My Favorite Older Person Essay Contest, Intergenerational Drum Circle at the Hale Center with San Jose Elementary After School Program students, preschool power hour and music mash at Dunedin Public Library, chair volleyball seniors versus youth advisory committee at the Hale Center, and golfing at Dunedin Sterling Park and Driving Range. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's so cool. Well, good morning. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Commissioners, all of our city officials and guests today. You know, I'm just awed again that I'm, I'm standing here again to accept this year's Intergenerational Week proclamation. I have been so honored to be able to accept this before for several years, and I, today I'm with some of my current members. Well, Ginny, Ginny Moore is my co-chair, and of course, Elaine Swinehart is our liaison, who, with, for both of these women, I don't know how I would ever get anything done, or we would get anything done. So I am so in debt to them both. Once again, several of our schools right here in Dunedin have rise to the occasion and encourage their eighth grade students to write an essay called My Favorite Ameri, My Favorite Older Person. Now COVID took its toll last year, and we had a few of the kids, but this year, we had over 130 essays written. And that was just from three of our schools that were in our, in our community. And so going through these was just not an easy job, but believe me, believe us, we were thrilled to have these young people participate. Several of us who sat on the committee to read these, we sat together, we kind of giggled. I think we got a little tearful at times. But I think reading these gave us the privilege to see these young people and the amazing things they said about their older person. It was interesting to see who they considered an older person, too, as well. And I can speak for myself, you know, I came away feeling encouraged and excited about, these are the people going to follow behind all of us. And some of these essays were poignant, some of them showed so, most of them showed so much love and respect for whoever the older person was in their, in their life, and who they considered, again, their older person. There was lots of creativity, there was humor in some of these essays. And as a grandparent, and many of them were about grandparents, as a grandparent or an older person, I can only hope that some of my grandchildren would say some of the awesome things that these kids wrote about their, their loved ones. It was amazing. So again, thank you for this honor. We will be attending very, I have notified the, the kids that have wanted their families. I think the families were more excited than the kids were. The parents were just amazed, and they were so excited for their children. So we'll be here for your evening meeting in January, and the kids will be invited to come with their families. You'll have a chance to hear their essays. They're not all very long, but they are fun. And again, I, we look forward to, again, sharing that evening with the Area Agency on Aging, who does give us our gift cards, so that we can give each of the three top winners a gift and appreciation. So we will really look forward to that. And again, personally, I just want to thank everyone who makes up our, our Committee on Aging. It is an amazing, we've had to say goodbye to some of our older members, long-term members, I shouldn't say older, but long-term members. And we have just, we're just about ready to fill all of our seats with an amazing group of people here in Dunedin who are willing to get together and pull together our projects and work together to do what we can in our City of Dunedin. So thank you for that. Thank you, Jocelyn, also for supporting us. And I know that Ginny would like to say something. Thank you all so much for this honor.
Since I don't get your audience very often, I just wanted to say thank you very much for supporting us this year in our committee and our involvement with Pride. We were very proud to be involved in that. And then as a result of that, we have developed the LGBT Inclusivity Group, and Jeff has been, been joining and been very enthusiastic about that. And we really do appreciate your support. We really want the community to begin to be educated and to learn about the needs of the elderly in the, in the LGBT population. So we'll be working with that, but we couldn't do it without your support, and we do appreciate that. Thank you very much. Good, thank you. We'll see you in January.
Thank you. Well, we really do have some wonderful boards and committees that help all facets of our community and advise us on how to deal with things. So thank you very much for your service to our community. And again, you don't have to stick around if you don't want to. You're more than welcome to stay, but...
After work.
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
All right. So now it's a time for citizen input on any item that is not already on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Anybody want to come forward? I don't see anybody but staff, I think. So, okay. Come back to the commission. The agenda, we have the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for October 6th, 18th, November 1st, and November 18th. We have board and committee appointments to the Causeway and Coastal Waterways Committee, Hammock Advisory Committee, and the Military Veterans Advisory Committee. Hammock Advisory Committee, and the Military Veterans Advisory Committee. We have the Florida Firefighter Cancer Decontamination Equipment Grant for $9,000 and change. And then we have the blanket road closure list from January through June of next year. And we have the authorization to apply for a non-matching Pinellas County Solid Waste Municipal Recycling Reimbursement Grant. Commissioners, are there any items to be polled? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Okay. Commissioner Torga and Commissioner Frainy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to our action items, which is, the first item is our purchasing policy changes. So Hillary, would you please read Resolution 22-17 by title only?
Resolution 22-17, a resolution of the City, Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, adopting a purchasing policy and procedure manual for the City of Dunedin, repealing Resolution 1803 and any other resolutions in conflict therewith, and providing for the effective date hereof.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Commissioner Torga and Commissioner Frainy, thank you. You just lost Jennifer. I was going to ask her if she had an opening.
I guess that would be no.
Yeah. Go ahead, Les.
Good morning, Mayor Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Les Tyler, the Finance Director.
And welcome Chuck.
Chuck Inkney, our purchasing agent through the street today. Just a few brief comments. The last purchasing policy was taken to the commission on February 27, 2018. The current policy is a well, is a comprehensive document, but staff have reviewed the policy that has made some recommended changes to the policy that will be going over this morning. The Board of Finance, we presented this to the Board of Finance in October, and then again in November, and the Board of Finance approved the revisions unanimously at the November meeting on November 16th. Included in the staffing report is a redline version, which is attachment B in the staffing report, and Exhibit A is the amended policy with changes included attached to the resolution. We decided to mainly do the review to update the policy to.
I'm sorry, we won't have that anymore pretty soon.
That's got a long history.
I know, sorry.
I heard it too.
We all did. I'm sure the people at home heard it too.
We, the main reason for the changes was we wanted to increase some dollar threshold limits in the policy as well as some other changes. And I'll turn it over to Chuck to go over the highlights of the changes.
Good morning.
How long have you been here?
Twenty-two years. Good morning, Mayor.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Chuck Inkney, the purchasing agent. So as Les mentioned, the last time we came to commission for revisions to the purchasing policy was in 2018. Some of the major changes to the policy, the first one impacts our quote thresholds. Today, we have a requirement that we have three quotes whenever we spend more than $1,000. Our recommendation is to change that to $2,500. And likewise with our P card, we have a single purchase limit, the most money that somebody's allowed to spend on any single purchase of $1,000 today, and we're recommending that be increased to $2,500 as well. We also have sort of a special class of work whenever a contractor is required to come on site to give us a quote to do some work. We only require one quote today for up to $3,000, and we're recommending that increase to $5,000. We have made some changes to the way that we piggyback contracts, so it's a little bit more of a formalized process. And we have recommended that in certain situations, when we have a repair to equipment, it's very difficult to get quotes for that whenever you have to send that equipment out to a site to get an estimate to do the repair. So we would request that we are only required to get one quote for that. And the final major change to the policy is how we select consultants. Today, we have a lot of consultants under contract, and whenever we spend more than $50,000 on a consultant, we have a special process to talk to some of those consultants. That process came about, about 20 years ago, when it was felt that we needed to do that in order to comply with CCNA regulations. Most entities do not have that type process, so we're recommending that we eliminate it. And basically, it just expedites the selection of consultants for projects when they're already under contract. Today, we come back to commission for any award for a consultant over $50,000, and that will continue. So those are the major changes to the policy. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Chuck. Would you also just, for the benefit of the commission and those watching, just talk about, and maybe if Jennifer wants to step in, it doesn't matter, some of these things are a result of, you know, cost of goods and services increasing with the world's economy, right? But some of it is also workload and being able to be more efficient in getting the work the city needs to get done, right?
Right.
I mean, can you just describe that? Because I mean, I think that's a general question for everybody.
Okay. So I mean, to give you a little bit of an overview of our volumes, for example, in Fiscally Year 22, we had 928 POs that we created, and the total value of the spend was just over 39 million.
PO being a purchase order.
Right, correct, a purchase order. So in the class of purchase orders from the $1,000 to $2,500 range, for example, we had 226 purchase orders. So that's about a quarter of our total volume. And that amount of purchase orders represented $380,000 in costs, so fairly minor costs, which was about less than 1% of our spend. So 1%, less than 1% of our spend, we're taking 25% of our POs. So from an efficiency standpoint, for me, it's very time-consuming, and also for staff to have to get multiple quotes for those POs. The value of, you know, the savings, if you will, in that range of POs is pretty small because the quotes are pretty much the same for where you go. So there's really not a whole lot of risk of extra costs, but there is a lot of extra process. Similarly, for the staff who have to get quotes when they get a contractor to come on site, that's extremely time-consuming for them. It's also extremely difficult to get contractors to come on site to give us quotes for small jobs. That class of quote, for example, I'm estimating we're going to have about 40 POs a year. So it's not a lot of volume, but it's a lot of trouble for staff to get that. So yes, it does definitely make us more productive.
Could you also mention briefly, Chuck, that we did a survey and looked at other cities for those threshold dollars?
That's correct. We did survey other cities for their quote thresholds, their P card, single purchase limits. And so that's where our recommendation came from for the $2,500 threshold.
Okay. And Jennifer, did you have anything to add before I open up for questions?
No, I think Chuck's overview was a whole lot better than my briefing of it yesterday. So I think he added a lot of good information there.
Okay, and you feel confident in what's being recommended?
I do, Mayor. Yes, very confident.
Okay. Commissioner Torga, any questions?
I only have one question, and I'll make a comment before that, so it explains why I only have one. I did go through the document thoroughly and read the entire document and saw it's an update, and so I appreciate that very much, and had a great conversation about that with the city manager. Regarding the consultants, I understand that we have these open contracts with the consultants, and I just want to ask that, the question is, do we really, can we really make sure that we focus a consultant that we need to have on a project, that they have the qualifications for that, for that process? As opposed to just saying, well, we have these numbers of people that are already approved, and so perhaps they can, you know, we'll just use them rather than go and look at somebody who has a strong background in that particular area. Now, I don't expect that to affect very many, very many things that we do. So for example, water and wastewater, et cetera, those are pretty much qualified. But should that happen, we do still have the capacity, and who calls that? Would that be somebody, you would perhaps bring that up?
Well, the way the process works is we have different divisions. We call them divisions. There are different classes of consultants. So for example, we might have one that does wastewater and wastewater consulting. We have another class for architects. So in 2018, we did a mass RFQ, and we've had some smaller ones since then, where we asked consultants that were interested in providing services under these seven classes to respond to us, and then we went out and we put contracts in place. So if somebody wants to use one of those consultants, we have their information on what we qualify them for. So for example, Division 7, somebody might be qualified under surveying. So we have three or four consultants that we have for surveying. And anytime somebody wants to use one of those, they would contact a consultant or multiple. That's their decision on, depending on the project. They would talk to those consultants to find out who could do the work, what their qualifications are, what their availability is, that kind of stuff. So that's generally going to be engineering staff, community development has consultants there for planning. So that's typically how that would work.
Jennifer, you probably have a say in there, you and your department heads.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So my question still remains, if there's a specialized area that we want to have something looked at, we will consider that we may wish to have someone with more specific knowledge in that particular area. And do you call that out, or does somebody else call that out, or does the city manager then call that out, or?
I'm sorry, are you saying if they're not under contract currently?
Correct.
Oh, okay. That happens from time to time, yeah. And the end user, typically the department head, would make that decision that, hey, we don't have anybody under contract that can provide this service, and then we would have to start a new process depending on what that project was.
So we may have someone who has the capacity to do that study, but may not be the best person for that study.
It's possible.
Then we would, then we still will go out and look at somebody who may have the better capacity to do that.
It's possible, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gow, any questions?
Who would initiate that? Anyone can initiate that.
Generally, it's the department head, yes. Yeah.
And/or under your advice as well, perhaps?
Well, if, once they determine that they don't have a consultant that can provide the service, they would contact me, yes, and we would start that process. But generally, they're the ones who would determine that there's nobody under contract that can provide the service.
And we would normally have that discussion, either a department head meeting or during our one-on-ones, and decide to go out of our continuing services contract. So, you know, the point, Commissioner, is that to get the very best that we can for the project at hand, and if we have to go outside, then we certainly would.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Gow, any questions?
Ask and answer, and that was the question I had.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate that you guys did the survey, because that was one of my questions. And so, I mean, I think these are good for efficiency. The only thing I, you know, when I look at sometimes why we over, you know, over-bureaucrize some of this stuff, is how do we ensure that we're gonna, people are gonna use not just the same person every time? Okay, so it's $2,000, every time I do tree work, I'm just gonna keep doing the same person. I mean, how do we maintain the fact that we don't, we give the new guy a chance, the new businesses a chance? It's not always the same business.
Yeah, that's always a struggle. You know, people get comfortable with whoever they're comfortable with. We do get, I do get calls from vendors all the time wanting to provide service to the city, and typically I would talk to them and refer them to the user department to try to get them in the mix. But, you know, I don't really get too involved in that kind of purchase because it's a small dollar purchase. So it's really the department typically that would make that call. But yeah, we do try to encourage them to use multiple vendors. Tree example, tree work, for example, is a perfect example where, you know, we have probably 10 different tree companies that we use in the city, and we rotate that around. I think a lot of that has to do with how quickly the vendor can respond. So by, by the nature of the service and the requirement of the time, it by, in and of itself, will require that we use more than one vendor for it a lot of times.
Jennifer, can you add anything to that? I mean, I think it's a philosophy, right? And it's a mindset, because it's easier to kind of go to the same person you've always gone to and then, but also give another people a chance to, you know, improve the service and the competitiveness.
Right. And when we were reviewing the purchasing policy changes in the agenda briefing, we did discuss that, actually, you know, that to ensure that we continue to spread the goodwill, if you will, amongst all of our vendors. And I think that if we, you know, just keep a running tally, especially the larger projects, because they tend to take issue. If you have two consultants that do planning and you keep on going to one, then the other one's going to object at some point. Why am I, you know, under contract? So I think that we just need to be very vigilant and just keep a running list, you know, of the consultants that we're using to make sure that we're using everything, you know, and plus, in order to make sure that we're getting those fresh eyes on some of the work that we're doing as well. And I think that that's the point. So I think that we need to keep a running tally of who we have and who we're using, especially in the architectural engineering and planning aspect.
And we talked about this yesterday, like when the approval comes for the agreements for the consultants in particular, that maybe it might make sense for the commission to get a report that actually says who we actually used over the time period before. I mean, do you guys gather that now?
We can do that. We can figure out how we'd convey that information to all of them.
Would just help us, then we kind of know. I mean, it doesn't mean, you know, you wouldn't have a heavy usage of one over the other depending on the projects. It's just, I think, keeping track just kind of allows for people to ask questions if something doesn't quite look right, or something looks heavy, you know, heavier on one side than maybe it should. But I mean, I think these are all good changes, though, I mean, for efficiency. It's just, I think, just keeping that philosophy in people's heads.
Commissioner Walker, any questions?
Yes, we'll comment and then a question. So I did have a chance to review the new procurement policy, and I do have quite a bit of experience at the federal level. What I saw in the plan was basically all the tenants of good business practice, thresholds, efficiencies, transparency, and provisions for qualification as a preferred vendor. So I think that that looks pretty solid to me. Kind of around the question of competition, I also, I also like the fact that you have a local business provision in there as part of the qualification for a particular vendor. And this is more of a philosophical question, I guess, because obviously, and this is really in the vein of enhancing the competition, but are there any state or county provisions or incentives that might be provided if we had specifically set aside for small business percentages for small disadvantaged business? Examples being veteran-owned small business, service-disabled veteran-owned business, those sorts of things. Any consideration on that?
I'm not aware of any programs that have set asides or anything like that. The city doesn't have a policy as far as that's concerned. I don't think we're unusual for small cities in that, to that extent.
Yeah, that's a fair answer, because obviously, there's a lot that would go into that type of a program. But yeah, that's more, I'm the new guy here, so I'm just trying to get my arms around some of the aspects of your plans and policies. So greatly appreciate your response. Thank you.
You know, if I can add something to that, I do think we talked about what you're talking about, I don't know, four or five years ago, I can't remember, maybe it was the last time we did this. It could have been 10 years ago, I don't remember, but, and we added the local provision because that was really important to us, that, you know, if there's a guy in Dunedin or a guy in Pinellas County or Gal, you know, that can provide something, we want to give them the job, especially like in the great recession that we had in '08, '09, '10. And I think we had this whole conversation about the specialty, you know, disadvantage and all those things, and it was the same thing that Chuck just said. It was because there were no provisions outside that we could get funding to assist with it, we were, it was greatly complicating things.
Yeah.
But we did, I'm pretty sure we talked about it, and I'm sure you'll remember this, Chuck, that, you know, as you're going through these things, that if, you know, all things being equal, we obviously want to give preference to those types of businesses, but there's nothing in the purchasing policy that says that.
Yeah.
Good thing to bring up, though. Keep us in our heads.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Seeing our hearing now, we'll come back to the commission. Any final comments? Commissioner Torga?
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for the input. So my comments that relate to this, I really liked the thoroughness of this and how you really went through this in detail, and the considerations that you made. I also have been involved in this quite heavily, and I thought it was just excellent. And the percentages and the increases were timely, were, I thought, were excellent. So I appreciate the, this procedure, although not new, are a little bit more efficient, I believe, I personally believe. And by the way, by the way, the, some of the increases are not significant at all con- And the percentages and the increases were timely, were, I thought, were excellent. So I appreciate the, this procedure, although not new, are a little bit more efficient, I believe, I personally believe. And by the way, by the way, the, some of the increases are not significant at all, considering the time and place where we are. And also, I liked how it was set up, because we're also looking for efficiencies in the municipality. We want to make sure that we have the right person, right company, doing the right job. And sometimes that does mean we may use someone over and over and over again, and sometimes that can bring critics. But don't, I just want to make a comment about that. Don't let that stop us from doing the right thing, which is always to get the most effective and efficient bang for the money that we're spending on this. So I really appreciate the work that went into this, the entire staff, and the thoughts about it. So, thank you.
Any final comments? Commissioner Gow?
Just a few, just, well done, gentlemen. It was my real first opportunity to do a deep dive on this. I like what you all brought forward. I think efficiency is important. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Franny?
Yeah, so, no, I'm appreciative of less, Chuck. I mean, I just said to Chuck the other day, he's been, you know, kind of a mainstay. And I'll tell you, in purchasing, it's important to have a really solid mainstay. So thank you for the work. And Commissioner Walker, thanks for the input, because, you know, I think that's what fresh eyes up here allow. You know, somebody who's got some experience, kind of looks at it freshly, gives us another validation of what's there. So, no, I feel good about the changes, and, you know, thanks for bringing it forward.
Any final comments? Commissioner Walker?
Thank you, Commissioner Franny. Yeah, it's a solid plan. It's got all the, all the good business practices that need to go into it. And I also want to thank the staff for the work that they've done, and echoing Commissioner Franny's and Commissioner Torga's comments. Thank you.
As everybody's already said, you know, it's cautious enough to ensure cost competitiveness, but there's enough change to encourage efficiency, and I'm very happy with it. So thanks for all the hard work. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Mayor Bishaski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we have Resolution 22-26, Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Grant Award of Fire Rescue Extrication Equipment Value to $38,000 and change. Hillary, would you please read Resolution 22-26 by title?
Resolution 22-26, a resolution the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, finding that a public safety purpose will be served by accepting a grant of fire rescue extrication equipment from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Incorporated, authorizing the city manager to accept such equipment and providing for an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Torga is the second. Thank you.
You guys are gonna have to get a little bit, no.
Better be quicker. Please, welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Sigman, and, thank you for having us. We were very lucky and fortunate to be awarded this grant. It's for $38,000 in equipment. That is new extrication equipment that's going to go on to Engine 6-1. The equipment is, it's saltwater, submersible, battery-operated extrication equipment. So it provides for a lot more versatility. It'll keep us with the latest state-of-the-art equipment. So we're very excited about this.
Thank you.
And this is the second grant that Firehouse Subs has given us in three years. Yeah, which is pretty incredible. So we're very fortunate to have them as a partner and help us out.
Awesome. Okay. Any questions? I'll start on this end this time. Any questions?
No, no questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Walker?
No question.
Commissioner Torga?
No.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Seeing our hearing now, everybody clear it out. Come back to the commission. Any final comments?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just, I'm a big fan of buying local and small business, but just a big shout-out to Firehouse Subs. And this is just amazing work when they give back to the community, so.
Yeah, so I just want to suggest that for one of our next lunches, when we have to work through lunch, we actually use Firehouse Subs, because it is amazing. I mean, like you said, it's the third one, and it's not insignificant. I mean, $38,000 is a lot of money, so we should support them by eating one of our lunches. I know it's not always the healthiest, but it's good.
It is good. No comments.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We're very excited. Good job. We really appreciate your hard work, because you had to work to get that money, so thank you very much.
Chief Leon.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Bishaski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list is a warding of the bid for the electrical system upgrade in the amount of $16 million and change. The staff is recommending that we table this item. Can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Gow and Commissioner Torga, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Sorry, I think I'm gonna sneeze. Next is the Architectural Design Services for Dunedin Golf Club Restoration. Again, staff is recommending to postpone this item until December 13th. Can I have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
See? There you got it. Okay, Commissioner Walker? Was that you, Jeff? Oh, Commissioner Torga? Okay. And Commissioner Torga is the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, now we're down to our annual selection of vice mayor. Do you have anything you want to talk about before I go down this road?
If you go ahead, and then if you have any questions, I have all the stuff.
Okay, we do have a process to do it, but it doesn't have to be complicated, but we have a very complicated process in case it goes unwieldy. I'm just gonna say, I, I'll just tell you all, I took a look at our rotating schedule of vice mayors, and as you know, the vice mayor always sits to the right of me, and you can see who I put there. So, y'all, it's up to you to nominate.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Torga for the role of vice mayor.
Thank you. Everybody else okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I'm good with that.
Because we don't need a vote. Right? We don't even need a second. Any other nominations?
I mean, the alternative is that he would come back and sit here, and
Yeah, we don't want him over there.
So, you know.
Where would I sit?
Yeah.
As long as there's no other
Are there any other nominations? I do need to ask that.
Correct.
Okay, no other nominations. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Torga. And as you know, you have the guy that goes everywhere, so just in case you can't make it. All right, we're done. Okay, we have the review of city commission's rules and procedures. It is something that we just updated a couple of years back.
Actually, in January.
Oh, yeah. That's right, just last January. But are there
That's code for let's not talk about that. But, yeah.
Well, we do have fresh eyes, so are there any suggested changes to our rules of procedure?
Yes, I would like to.
Go ahead.
Anywhere you wish to go in?
You got it.
I just wanted to bring up the significance of us having a Tuesday morning meeting, and consistently having a Tuesday morning meeting, just for discussion. And we've got some, someone new on the commission, so they haven't had any input to this, and that's not why I'm saying it. But we spend a lot of, a lot of time, and a lot of staff's time, having this meeting scheduled consistently. And oftentimes, we end up with very little for the Thursday night meeting. And I can't say which meeting our residents or citizens, or the folks that are concerned or involved in the city, how they feel about what time is better. But traditionally, we've held the preponderance of our, of our discussions in the evening, historically, at least. So I just wanted to bring that up and just kind of talk, just see if anybody has any input on that. And keeping in mind that we started this, so, maybe about four or five years ago, and there was a number of reasons, I think, why, and I'll just reiterate a couple of them. One of them was that we had a, we had a number of people going through an agenda review, and at that point in time, the city, the existing city manager, the then-city manager, would bring in the entire staff. And we'd go through, spend a whole day or a day and a half with the entire staff in, and some of us didn't feel like that was necessarily necessary. But then again, we wanted some work sessions, or some, as the mayor likes to call them, always. What do you call them when we have, not a work session, but you call it a?
I don't know. What do I call it?
Workshop.
Yeah.
So we included a workshop in there. So we had a workshop, and then we ended up, we included a meeting in there. And so I just wanted to bring that up, to see if, if we really need to follow that consistently with every Tuesday, every other Tuesday that we do that? Or do we even want, do we want to move it to the evening, where other, perhaps someone has a feeling that people would prefer that? I haven't done a lot of research about this, talking to constituents, other than, many of them don't know about the Tuesday meeting, but also many that don't know about the Thursday meeting either.
Either.
Yeah. So I just open in conversation.
Sure. Jennifer, can you, from a staff perspective, tell us if our scheduling affects you in any way?
In terms of the hours that worked and that type of a thing?
Yeah, I mean, are you, well, Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Torga mentioned that you, mentioned that staff, you know, that this takes up staff time.
I'd like to chime in on this, but it's my turn.
Sure.
Well, I think that the way that we're doing the, first of all, the agenda briefings is as efficient as we can get it, which is me with each of you individually during that Monday, and calling the department directors when there's something complicated that I can't, you know, explain properly, or that you need more expertise. In those terms, it's efficient to, the work sessions is efficient when we're purchasing, you know, widgets and that type of a thing. So some of the workshops go long, obviously, or the work sessions do go long. I think that that would mean that that Thursday meeting would go very long. It could go very long as well. So, you know, we, staff, we serve at the will of the commission. So whichever direction the commission wants us to go in, we will certainly go in. It is efficient right now. We're getting business done. We truly are. I am concerned about that Thursday night meeting, just because my understanding is, and we had just turned to this, to this program just before I got here, I think, right? That that Thursday night meeting was really for development actions, right?
Any kind of ordinance, public hearing-type things that were
Ordinances, right, exactly. And so I think that if we eliminate that the Tuesday meeting, you know, altogether, then that Thursday, when development picks up again, we have cause additional, could go really long, you know? So I think that we're kind of in a, in a very strange period right now, where the bill, you know, the construction market is obviously de-escalating, so we don't have as much public hearings on Thursday night. So, you know, so as a result, we're canceling those Thursday nights. And I think that's very visible to the community, in my mind, that we're canceling the Thursday nights. So we could certainly transfer some of the items from the Tuesday onto the Thursday, and shorten that, or just have a workshop, until we get through this. So there are all sorts of different things that we can do. It is efficient from staff's perspective. So, but as I said, we can serve at the will of the commission. Whatever it is the commission wants us to do, we will do.
Commissioner Franny, you said you had something you wanted to?
No, actually, I did, John. I mean, we were in each other's heads, and sometimes it cracks me up, you know, because we obviously can't talk about this, but I have the same, I had the same thing I was wanting to bring up, because I see things pretty much like you do. You know, I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision, but I do, I do have the concern that the Tuesdays are loaded up. I mean, many times, we would go over, and then we have a little bit on Thursday. And I do think the visibility of the meetings for the citizens is more Thursday. I mean, that's where they think of the city business being taken up. I mean, I've had citizens say to me, you know, oh, yeah, I turned on to look at the commission meeting, and like, it was like, it was at 6:30, and it was over. Or, did it happen, you know? And so I have that, I share that same concern, because I think we did a couple of things. I think, and again, we did it, I think, I think the change was done pretty much right after I was elected, but before you were city manager. And I know where it came from, because staff repeatedly said they were sitting in a day and a half sessions, all of them with each commissioner. Like, they'd literally spend a day and a half, basically, covering all these bases. And truthfully, I don't know of any city manager who does it like that. But that was the prior city manager. You know, any city manager I know, basically, typically, is a one-on-one. Sometimes they'll bring in a staff member or two that has an expertise because of the issue, but they'll do those briefings like you do the briefings. And it's very efficient, and it doesn't take all the staff time to do it. And I think that we, so we, we went to this, I was concerned when we did it, just for that reason, because I knew historically how city managers did it. I thought we were reacting to something, you know, and then you came and you set your course, you know, and then on top of it, we then started to add action items. So I think, but I think all well-intended. I mean, we wanted to do it for the good of citizens, but I do think what, what we're finding right now is, and again, it could shift back because of development, but what we're finding now is, we're in the most citizen-oriented visibility time, where our citizens go to see our stuff, we're not having that much. And we're loaded up on Tuesdays, and we're canceling Thursday. So I think it is an issue, and I think it's, I'm not, I'm not sure what we want to do, you know? I mean, I think formally, like, the workshops were kind of more as needed, depending on the issues, and they were very issue-generated, like the legislative, you know, talking about the legislative program, or talking about things that just needed more length of time to kind of brief us on. So, and maybe there's a mix of that. I don't know. But I share the concern, because I do think the citizen-oriented time is Thursday night, and basically, we're ending up with nothing on Thursday night.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yep, Commissioner Walker?
So, yeah, I don't, I obviously haven't had enough time in the seat to really, and I don't know that I would, you know, have a decision on this at this point, but I will provide some feedback. You know, over the course of the last several months, when I was out walking precincts, I did get quite a bit of feedback from, from the community with regards to how many are actually tuning in to the meetings. And it's significant. And I also got the sense, over the course of those discussions, that, you know, a lot of them are used to that Thursday meeting. They dial, they tune in for the, for the Thursday evening meeting. And the Tuesday meeting didn't seem to be as, the awareness of the Tuesday meeting was not as much as the Thursday meeting. So I, you know, I did, I do think there was a distinction there. So it's just a comment, metric, if you will. Yeah, thank you.
Mayor?
I'm sorry, one thing I didn't say, though. I feel that I've got to say it, is that it's most certainly the Tuesday morning meeting is easier for staff. You know, I think that that goes without saying, but that said, we serve at the, you know, at the will of the commission. But I can't go back into that conference room with all the department heads and not say that the Tuesday morning meeting is easier for staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Gow?
This is a wonderful conversation. I like, I like where it's going. Even, even my mother has made comments. Did you guys meet tonight? It was over early. I, I, I don't know the process of where it's decided, what's a Tuesday morning, what's a Thursday night issue. It might be focused on workload and efficiency as soon as it's ready to put on an agenda. The first agenda that shows up is a Tuesday.
Yeah, no.
I don't know whether you can look at things
Jennifer, can you, can you provide him, not the second? Can you, can you provide the commission with the backup of how that got determined?
Because in a nutshell, what goes on a Tuesday is more operational, like purchasing policies. The stuff we just covered today, it's not necessar, it's stuff that, I'll call it boring, for lack of a better word. And I know there's a lot of better terms I can use, but it's stuff that most people really don't care about. It's very operational. That's a Tuesday, except for the work informational items that we get at the end. With the combining of those things, because those things were clogging up our Thursday meetings and making them way too long. And so Thursday night, it's not just development, it's any number of things. But, you know, we've had a lot of things happen that have removed those things from the agenda until next year. So, anyway, there is a rhyme or reason as to decide.
And, and, and I'm sure there is, right? And in the whole Tuesday morning is a result of the overload of Thursday nights. And so if we're lessening our workload in any of those, just even if it's boring and there's room on the Thursday night, it would be nice if they were on the Thursday night. Because it is, you know, and it's, I am amazed, and even when I hear it from colleagues in other cities, when we talk about the number of Dunedin residents that tune in and watch our meetings, or if, don't watch it live, they, they, they watch it after. And it's, we have a very engaged community. And they want, they want to see us debate and talk and have conversations. They want to hear from the staff. And so it's, if you can be a little more consistent, that would be nice on the Thursday night. So that's it.
So thank you and thank you, Commissioner Torga, or Vice Mayor Torga, for bringing it up. And in my mind, I too, I think we have to also recognize that a lot of people are dropping their cable and they're streaming. And so they're going to be watching us on social media. We do promote our Tuesday meetings all the time on a regular basis, which we did not do before. I know that there is a transition of people having access to social media. You know, and I know that there's a thing.
Well, access and knowing how. There can be two different things.
But I also think that we don't, you know, I think we want to take a little time with this. I'm not saying I'm against making the change, any kind of changes. I think we want to take a little time and, you know, you know, we need our department heads and our city manager to sit down to look at the next six months and what's coming. You know, I don't know what's in DRC as far as development. I'm sure there are a lot of things happening, you know, that are, that could be over the next six months. I don't know what else is happening that might need to be. You know, some of these things that are coming up on our, what I will call workshop items, that are Tuesday items for discussion, no decisions, those things are going to come to a head and all be on Thursday night's meeting for decision-making and public input. But that's not going to happen till after the first of the year, purposefully. Part of also, we have a lot of people involved in our new city hall building and there's a lot of things taking people away from things that haven't come before us yet. All these things in the works. So, you know, I don't think we want to make a rash decision. I think when Jennifer and Doug, Jorge was probably a part of it, when they sat down and kind of designed what the meetings would look like, there was a rhyme or reason. So please pass any of those documents out. I'm sure I have, matter of fact, I know I have them in a folder somewhere because I've been cleaning out in my office. So I don't want to make any rash decisions myself. I think we've been doing this, like you said, you've been here for five years. We've been doing this for at least four. I think people know that we have a Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're right, we did it, we started to do it, there was an agenda review and then we were doing an agenda review on Tuesday, which we all determined was ridiculous to talk about an item and then talk about it a second time on Thursday, which is what some cities do. Clearwater does it that way. And what we decided was, let's do these more operational type things, you know, on Tuesday and, and items that, you know, kind of change our direction or policy changes or those kinds of things on Thursday. If you remember, we were having only Thursday night meetings and we were going till 1:00 in the morning. And this was a regular thing, whether we had development things or not. And so this was a way to ensure, and what was bad about that is residents were having to sit here before they could speak that long. And we said, well, we can't have that. So there's a trade-off, I think, to, I think we're in a lull for a reason. That's my personal opinion. I'm not saying I'm not willing to adjust anything, but I, I never want to go back to that. And this sort of gives us full reign for Thursday nights to have the thing, you know, to have that availability. It is a change, but I mean, it's not a change that we just did. And if people don't know about it, then maybe we are not doing a good enough job communicating it. I think we need to do that because we are on TV. It is on cable. It does run in a loop. I mean, I think we need to do a better job of communicating it versus trying to change actually what the schedule is. Because that's what I see, I'm hearing. You know, people don't necessarily, with the world of streaming and on-demand, people don't necessarily need to watch it live. Nobody watches a lot of things live anymore. I mean.
A lot of people still do.
No, I know. I'm not, and I'm not discounting that.
And that you're going to physically come to, you know, that.
Yeah. No, I'm not discounting that. I'm just saying, things are changing. So I think we need to communicate this better to people. If you all are hearing from your constituents that you're worried about it, you know, and, and I don't think what we do is a whole lot different than others. If, you know, and we did that whole survey about how many meetings they have. And if you remember, what we said is we are a small city with big city issues. It's not like we're talking just to, I mean, we have a lot of things to cover. And more, more so than, we are the fifth, fifth or sixth largest city in Pinellas County. You know, so I would say that we probably at least need to promote our meetings more. And maybe, Jennifer, on, on the commission's behalf, you can take a look at what's coming. What do you see happening? And how do you think that's going to affect our meetings? And maybe report back on what your thoughts are.
Certainly.
Is everybody okay with that?
And everything's fine. Just I don't think anybody, you just want to make the point of I don't think anybody up here was trying to get rid of the Tuesday meeting. I don't think that was the intent of this conversation.
No, I don't think so.
Was to just put the weight on the, on the Thursday.
Yeah, I think it's taken out, right?
And I think people are watching live and they're also watching it in the loop. And also the more meetings you have during the week, that's now the residents have to, that's just one more meeting I've got to watch. And I think they'd rather watch one meeting during that week than, okay, I watched the workshop and I got, which one did I watch that I'm not, in trying to track what they're doing when their lives are just as busy as our lives are. So it's.
Well, I think this is a really good discussion because of the fact that, you know, I think process needs to be reviewed and it needs to be changed as needed, you know. And I think, I think it's worthy of discussion. I also think it's worthy of consideration in terms of how we proceed. That's really it.
Okay. So based on that, yes, so, so then we're just going to bring it back after she reviews it?
Yeah, I think they need to take a look at it and, you know, can advise us under city manager update or whatever, or talk to us individually and kind of get a sense of, you know, do you foresee this happening with our Thursday night meetings, knowing what you know is in the pipeline? Because our Thursday night meetings won't just be development projects, but there'll be decision-making points like financing for the pool and, you know, or the pool discussion, a parking garage discussion, the, the Dunedin Golf Club discussion, the, any number of really, really large things that are coming. I don't know that whole schedule as far as final decision points, which would tell you, you know, how our Thursday meetings look. Because those are the meetings that we want to make sure we make it very convenient for folks to come.
I think that I would like to talk to the department directors, obviously, about this, this entire conversation. And I don't, we're communicating the meeting. I mean, it's everywhere, you know, on social media. It's on, of course, the government calendar, that's a given. We send out, you know, ensues Dunedin News, you know, you have a list of meetings. I think the only thing that we could do is say on Tuesday, December 13th, the city commissioner's going to be talking about architectural design for the golf club, you know, that type of a thing.
And that's just the services. It's not the actual design.
Services.
It's a service contract. So it's not even one of those things that.
But, you know, I don't mean to interrupt you, but what I'm saying, though, is that I don't think this is a communication in terms of to alert the public that we're having the meeting because it's everywhere. It is literally everywhere. And they're not watching it because perhaps they're not interested. I don't know, you know, in what we're doing in particular. I think that when there's an item that we think is of interest to them like that, which is, which is a contract, a design services contract, that we could just name that individual item to see if they're interested. And then they can avail themselves later of, of that particular item. But, yeah, honestly, I just have to say, I don't think it's a communication problem.
Well, I don't either, but I'm just saying, maybe we need to communicate it even more, like you just suggested, putting some of the items that are going to be on the meeting in our communications.
And, you know, to?
And I think we do that as well, but I've seen that before. So I'm not trying to say there's a problem with it. But I mean, if, if everybody's feeling like people don't know what's happening, well, then we have to shift a little bit, is all I'm saying.
Well, part of it is people are just, they're creatures of habit.
Yeah.
And for, like, I've lived in Dunedin over 35 years and forever, Thursday night, that's the night, you know?
We also weren't as busy back then as we are now.
Yeah, I'm not, and I, and I understand how we're doing. I think this is a great discussion. So it's not about being set on one way or another. It's about what is the best strategy to, to make sure we're feeding into that natural valve. That's it.
And also the interesting piece of it is we have a whole ton of new people that have moved in our city in the last six years.
Oh, really?
So, you know, things are morphing. But anyway, you all will look at it whenever and just determine what are?
Sure.
Okay. Any other changes? Anybody is looking for us to discuss on our commission procedures, rules and procedures?
I had three others. No, just kidding.
She was already giving me the eye, so I was like.
Okay. All right. So can I have, well, this is a public hearing? No. Yes. Anybody wish to speak to any of these items? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, to continue upholding Resolution 22-01?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Walker. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Annual review of the travel policy and travel reimbursement policies for both elected and charter officials. Anybody have any recommended changes that they want us to consider? Nope? Okay, we did, we did make some changes, I don't know, last year, a couple of years ago, in the last couple of years, and I think we're good. You don't have any issues, right?
No.
Okay. Can I have a motion to uphold Resolution 2203?
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Torga, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Good job, Les. It was the longest presentation in history.
Wow, yeah.
Okay. And then we have next our liaison, our annual liaison review. For the benefit of those who have not been here before, we sort of have an unwritten policy that if, if any one of us are sitting on executive committees of particular organizations that we're serving, that we don't ask them to leave because that upsets the balance of, of the actual organization. We don't want to hurt that. So I do know that Commissioner Franny is on the executive committee of TIBARDA. Is it TIBARDA?
Tampa Bay.
Tampa Bay Planning. I knew it was the T. And I sit on the executive committee of Forward Pinellas. So if we can just, are we okay with still assuming those policies that we don't upset the organizations with those? Yeah, I'm looking for nods. Yes?
Yes, they would not be happy if, you know, I got pulled off, but.
Okay.
Or you were pulled off. They would not be happy if either one of us were pulled off.
Okay. So, so for Forward Pinellas, we're going to say we're good. And for Tampa Bay Planning Council, we're saying we're good. I'm going to look at the county stuff first, okay, and go through. The school board liaison is currently Commissioner Gao. And we have Commissioner Gao and Torga interested. Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority, it's currently Gao and Commissioner Gao is the only one interested. So maybe we say to that one.
You get it, you win it.
Yes.
So you got it. I mean, unless somebody else wants to throw their hat in the ring now. Okay, we have the Suncoast League of Cities. We have three people interested. Commissioner Torga is the current person. He's been that person, I think, for two years, right? Two, three years?
Three years, yeah.
Okay. And, you know, we have two others interested. So I guess we're just, there's nobody after that, right? No. Okay, so the two up in the air is the school board and the Suncoast League. Is everybody okay with leaving them in as they are or they really want to throw their hat in the rings? Because the, the interest indicators show Commissioner Gao's would like to continue with the school board and Commissioner Torga would like to continue with Suncoast League.
But then there wouldn't be anything for Commissioner Walker.
That's at the county level. All right, let's go to this local level. I mean, it not, and I will just say, not always is at the county level, a first-time commissioner doesn't always get there, just because. All right, well, let's leave those two open then and go to the local stuff.
I'd like to suggest a change on the local.
Okay, well, let me read through them. Dunedin Cares, current is Commissioner Torga and Commissioner Walker has, and you've been two years. Well, almost three, really. And then Commissioner Walker has that as number one, the Fine Arts Center, myself and Commissioner Walker, the Golf Club. Current liaison is Commissioner Gao. The next person in line is Commissioner Torga as a request. The museum, the people that had done it prior were Commissioner Kynes, Vice Mayor Kynes, and that's my number one. The Scottish Arts, I have been doing it for the last two or three years and, and I put it as number two. I see it's Commissioner Gao's number one. And the Blue Jays, Commissioner Franny has been doing it for three years and that's still her number one. What is your change that you're recommending?
Actually, it's for the Scottish Arts Foundation. And I wanted to suggest expanding that role to not just the Scottish Arts Foundation.
It is, you're right.
But also include New York Health.
It's all of it. It's all things Scottish. In my mind, we can rename it if you want to.
Well, I think it'd be.
How about Scottish culture? There you go.
That, that would work, Scottish culture.
Let's just rename it Scottish culture. Yeah, because it is all of that. Okay. So, you're not on here for Dunedin Golf Club, Commissioner Gao, anymore. So you're, you're kind of willing, you've, you've been there for a while and it's, it's about to transition.
Right, yeah. So this isn't a slight against that organization.
No, no, no. And I, and I don't, you know, sometimes they take it that way. It's never that. Okay, so Commissioner Torga is number two on that list. Want to take that on?
Sure.
Okay. So Dunedin Golf Club will be Commissioner Torga, Vice Mayor Torga?
Well, so can I just throw something out here? So?
Sure.
I mean, because, yeah, I don't know how you want to run it, but everybody's getting their number one, obviously. So it seems logical that, because Rob's not going to get his number one, he should get whatever he wants after that. Because his number one, I mean, if.
Well, it's number one and number two, which I'm, you know.
Okay, I just, you know, I just want to make sure, like.
No, I'm going to make sure he gets something.
Okay. I'll shut up.
Wait your turn.
I'm sorry.
You need me to move over there for a few minutes?
Yeah. This is my OCD coming in. How are we doing this?
Okay. Well, let's just go right here. Commissioner Torga, you've done Dunedin Cares for a couple of years and now you're going to take on the Historical Museum. Would you mind if Commissioner Wa, yeah, sorry. Would you, would you mind if Commissioner Walker takes on Dunedin Cares?
No. I mean, no, I mean, that'd be wonderful.
You're so good.
Okay. There you go. You got Dunedin Cares.
Thank you.
Happy?
I'm happy.
Yes, I'll shut up.
Okay.
Because it is the goal of this meeting is to make sure.
I'm being quiet the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Franny, your number one is the Blue Jays. I presume you're wanting to keep that. It's number, it's Commissioner Torga's number three.
I do. But I'm not talking anymore, so, but I do.
Commissioner Torga, you're not interested in fighting her over it, are you?
Does she want to fight?
Does she want to fight?
No. No, because she's gonna keep quiet.
You want to do that, she wants to do that.
She wants to do that, okay, so Commissioner Franny will remain the Blue Jays liaison. Thank you for serving in that capacity. You do a great job with it.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna throw out on the Scottish Arts Foundation, I have been serving, and because I wanted to do the Historical Museum, and everybody knows, I, I, we all talked about it a couple of years ago. Deborah wanted to continue to finish being that person with her passions for historic preservation, and, you know, I've said for a couple of years, this is my interest until I'm out in two years, so... With that, I thought, well, I can't have two number ones there. So Commissioner Gow, as our school liaison, I gotta think that being, one of the things I realized, being the Highland Games Scottish Culture person, having those two things together is A, efficient, but B, is beneficial to both. So you're willing to do that?
I am willing to do that.
Okay, they have a meeting tonight, by the way. I will not be there. Because I'm going to Deborah's thing.
That's definitely a mic drop moment, for sure.
At the, it's at the community center. Check with Andrea, she's got the email.
I love you, but the High School Chorus has a performance tonight.
Okay, well, you don't want to go there and announce, you know, that you're the new liaison?
I will, I'll, I'm everywhere, I'll figure it out.
I know you are.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, so, wait. Sorry. So, so in that conversation, I think what we're saying is Commissioner Gow will remain the school liaison and pick up the Highland Games, and those two things are very... When I did it and had them both together, it just made so much sense. So, congratulations. Okay, what didn't we cover? We have Dunedin Cares covered, okay. Golf Club's covered, Historical, okay. Yeah, I got that one, I'm just looking at the, okay, so... Scottish Arts and the Blue Jays, all right, so... I don't think we made, so we have the Fine Arts Center and the Historical Museum. Because I don't, did we make a decision on the museum? I just said that, I just said I was transitioning from one to the other.
Well, I think you should take the museum, it's your number one.
Okay, and then, thank you. Everybody okay with that? All right, and then we have the Art Center. So, the only other person that's listed on the Art Center is Commissioner Walker. So Commissioner Walker, would you like to take that on?
Yes, I would like to take that on.
Okay. So you do have two committees, it's just not one county and one local.
Okay.
So everybody kind of has a little bit of two, two, so I think that kind of pans out, and as we go, things will open. I think they're gonna love to have you, you're a member there, you've been going there, so... So then we'll go back to the county. I believe we, did we cover Forward Pinellas? Yeah, we did that, school board. I think we're still okay with you doing school board, PSTA, Suncoast League of Cities. Is, wait, who did, what did we say? Is that, that's still you, John? Okay, and Tampa Bay Plan, all right, I just want to make, did we cover everything?
Do you mind if I just read back, just, I'm, everybody's on the same page real quick?
I just suggested Jeff do everything, and that might make the whole conversation easier.
No, I feel bad.
So for Forward Pinellas, I have Mayor Bajalski. For the school board liaison, I have Commissioner Gow. For PSTA, I have Commissioner Gow. For the Suncoast League of Cities, I have Commissioner Torga, Vice Mayor Torga. And for the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, I have Commissioner Franny. Everybody on the same page? For Dunedin Cares, I have Commissioner Walker. For the Dunedin Fight Arts Center, I have Commissioner Walker. For the Golf Club Liaison, I have Vice Mayor Torga. For the Historical Museum, I have Mayor Bajalski. The Scottish Culture renaming, Commissioner Gow. And Toronto Blue Jays liaison, Commissioner Franny. Did I miss?
Everybody good?
That's good.
Okay, I don't think we have to vote, actually vote, we've got consensus direction, right? Okey-dokey.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
How this, this Franny ties herself twice? How does, how does, never mind.
I'm not allowed to speak anymore, so I can't clarify.
Yeah, don't engage her. She's a troublemaker. Oh, I don't know yet. Okay.
I just had one to add. I just want to compliment the mayor for getting us through that. Well done, well done.
Even though there's a tie.
It's not easy. Hey, you guys, in many cities, it's the mayor that picks, it's the chair of the board that picks who these committees go to, so... I don't think I want that. I think I'm quite good trying to just do this.
Yeah, that sounds the recipe.
Yeah, you know, you're gonna get hated no matter what you do. Okay, so the At-A-Glance calendar. Jennifer, did you have anything you wanted to add on the calendar? Because I mean, I know that you and Rebecca kind of reviewed the calendar, and, and in some cases, it is a little different. Do you want to just talk about that so that we don't go down any rabbit holes?
Sure, absolutely. Actually, the, the direction of the commission when you approved the At-A-Glance calendar in December of, of last year was to stick to the first and the third of every month. But when we really dug down and looked at the calendar, specifically in January, and we got into October and November, we had to make adjustments there, because it just, logically, it just didn't make sense. January, obviously, we have two holidays, which is very nice. We have, we have the New Year's holiday and then the Martin Luther King's birthday, so we had to move that back. And also, October, the way those meetings started stacking, if we moved to the, to the first meeting in November, which is November seventh, the issue with that is that's my birthday. No, I'm just kidding. It is, but anyway, but...
It runs into, and ends up running into Thanksgiving.
Those meetings all stacked up. You know, we'd have one meeting after another throughout the week, so we moved that first meeting in November to October thirty-first. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we were given direction from the commission, but once we had a look at it, we had to, had to make adjustments. Also, we are looking at a trip to, hopefully, to Scotland as part of our sister cities, and we need to really nail that down, but that's going to impact August, and so we need to, to really look at August, you know, later on this year as well. If we're, you know, we're working with, with the provost in Scotland, we're working with Colin O'Brien and those types of things, and of course, our pipe band for when they're going across the pond.
Yeah, so the dates aren't flexible.
Right, correct, yes, so I just want to acknowledge some of those changes. Thank you, mayor.
Anybody have any changes they need to make? Can we go with this? And it doesn't mean we can't change later.
Correct.
This is just the general calendar that everybody will use for planning purposes, for their own personal travel purposes. You know, family, those kinds of things, it just kind of gives you something. We like to put it out as early as possible so everybody can make their arrangements for those that travel all the time.
Yes.
I'm looking at you.
I'm not speaking.
Okay, we're good with the travel, I mean, we're good with the, with the calendar, do we need to do? I think I should do a motion on that. Huh? Consensus, yeah. All right, but this one is going to require some motions. So we have a, we'll move on, we got all our nitty-gritty done, and we have one final thing. And by the way, according to our rules and procedures, any start items, which are items that have not been approved previously to be on our agenda, have to be at the end. So that's why we're doing this now, after all the petty things. So, as a start item, we have to vote to add it to an agenda. I know you all know this, I'm doing this for the benefit of Commissioner Walker so that he understands why are we doing it this way. So as a start item, I need a motion to place this on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Torga, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, it is on the agenda. Hillary? Jennifer? Rebecca, I don't know who I'm supposed to look to, who's gonna present this? Well, I mean, because, why don't you just summarize that we've already met on this and given...
I'll give you an overview, mayor. This is a settlement and mutual release agreement between Keystone Excavators and the City of Dunedin. This is, the city commission opened a shade session in public and then retired to the conference room where it carried on a shade session to settle this lawsuit for a cost of one point four million dollars. The, this is a full release, the City of Dunedin denies any wrongdoing in, or liability in connection with the allegations. It was an issue regarding a replacement of a stormwater pipe, if you will, and, and so staff is recommending that the city commission approve the settlement and mutual release agreement. I just wanted to, to specify for you where these funds are coming from, in regards to the one point four million dollars. First of all, the, there was eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that was set aside in order to, to address this dispute. These were funds that were not paid to Keystone until this dispute was, was resolved. And in addition, there's retainage for the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The total cost of the project was five point one million, by the way, so this is not the total cost of the project. The eighty-five percent of these funds are covered in this, rather, the, kind of, the proportions of these funds are eighty-five percent is in stormwater and fifteen percent, thirteen percent is in water, sorry, eighty-seven percent is stormwater, thirteen percent in water. That leaves a delta of three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which we'll take out of our risk fund, which we set aside for these purposes. And then it will be repaid by the Stormwater Fund as soon as we approve the rate study moving forward. So we're also going to tap into any insurance resources that we may have for the three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Again, the city admits no wrongdoing in the Keystone case. We are recommending, we are settling because we want to, to not have to incur additional attorney's fees as a result of this lawsuit. And as I said, the vast majority of the one point four million is already set aside and in our, in our budget.
I think the most important thing, though, is, is we're not settling for one point four. What we're, eight, eight, eight hundred and forty, you said, some thousand dollars, whatever that number is, doesn't matter exact. We already knew we, we owed them as part of the project. So really, the settlement, the settlement is from the eight forty to the one point four. Right. Right, so I just want to make sure, you know, that, you know...
The point is, the one million dollars is, is in, is in our budget.
And we already knew, and so that's, it's not like we're paying somebody one point four to go away. I want to make sure people understand, if they're listening to this or doing articles on it.
That is correct, mayor.
So, I think that's really important. All right, any questions or final comments on any of this?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just out of abundance of caution on, actually, your comments on making sure people understand, can a supplement be added to this that acknowledges the breakdown of costs so that anybody researching this later won't actually see it? And, and they, they won't hear the conversation, but they'll see that it's not there, so that one point four will come out of their head.
I agree with that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not spelled out on the staffing, I'm looking at it now, you're right.
We'll be happy to add that.
I think that's good, because I, I just, you know, after reading the article about the fifty grand, sorry. You know, that, I was not, sorry, Tracy McManus, but you're a wonderful reporter, except you didn't get it. You know, and the way it was presented was not exactly the way it all happened, I think, so... Okay. Can I have a motion to approve this settlement agreement?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Gow, thank you so much. All, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Torga?
Aye.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Mayor Bajalski?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously, thank you, everybody. And then finally, before we go on to, we've got a couple of agendas, and then we're gonna take a quick break before we get into the whole legislative priorities, which, you know, will bring a lot of talking. So our first agenda is the thirteenth work session. Any changes here from anybody? It all seems pretty... Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve that agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Torga and Commissioner Franny, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Yep, thank you. And then, we have this here because we had asked you, this is the agenda for Thursday, the fifteenth. At our last meeting, we discussed canceling this, but you didn't know at the time, you wanted to have the time to talk to your department heads to see if they knew of anything that was going to be needed or necessary for that meeting.
That's correct. And there was nothing.
There was nothing, okay. And there's nothing you can add to it, like a workshop item or anything like that?
No.
Okay, I hate to ask this question, given our recent conversation, but is everybody okay with canceling the Thursday meeting? Of the fifteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
And if you see, thank you, and if you see on our calendar, next year, we didn't even plan to have a second meeting in December. And so many organizations that you're elected to or sit on do that. So, okay, can I have a motion then to cancel the meeting of the fifteenth?
So moved.
Commissioner Franny and Commissioner, Vice Mayor Torga, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's take a five-minute break, get refreshed, and we'll come back and start with legislative priorities. Thank you. Back to our city commission of December 6th, right? Today's the 6th, commission work session. Um, we are moving on to our workshop item. Um, and this is our 2023 legislative action agenda. Um, anything you want to add before I turn to Nicole?
Uh, Mayor, um, I thi, one of the comments, thank you, Mayor, one of the comments that you had made during my evaluation was that how much better we're doing on our legislative platform, and I very much appreciate that, but that's all Nicole. So, she's been a super, doing a super job, just, just dogging, you know, the state and national, even the national level, uh, legislation that impacts the City of Dunedin and following up and writing letters and doing all those sorts of things. Um, we are, at this point, as you know, a little bit behind the ball, be, just because, um, we, last year you asked us to bring this to you earlier, but we have a new commissioner.
Yeah, and we, we, Rob, we purposely wanted to wait and not make these decisions without you.
Right.
And, and you may have input, you may not, it's okay, but we just felt it was important that, that you be a part of that decision-making, so we held up.
We really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yep. And legislative session starts when?
March.
March. Okay, well, so that's not bad.
Right.
They are in their committee meetings already, but, 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 you know.
Well, we have a solution for that, too, which we'll, we'll convey when Nicole's done, so.
All right. So then, I am going to turn this over to Nicole. Thank you for all your hard work. We do appreciate all your efforts, and I do want to just mention that our city attorney's office has done a great job as well in the follow-up. I mean, better, I think you all can agree, than we've ever had as far as, um, an annual list. Now, it comes late, later because it's all about what action does a city need to take with, with, um, law changes that affect us, but they work with each department.
They do. They're very.
Individually, and I mean, we've never been so on top of it since I've been here, I can tell you that for sure. So, that's 16 years.
Very good point, Mayor.
So, thank you to BMO. Nicole?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Nicole Delfino, Assistant to the City Manager, here today to review your legislative priorities development and review. So, we'll get started.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as what we're going to go over today, um, we're going to review your legislative policy statements from last year, um, see how you might want to modify them, uh, or, or remove or add to them, um, and then, you know, having you provide that guidance. Um, and then looking ahead, as Jennifer mentioned, um, the solution, um, that we have kind of discussed was to, um, take your feedback that you provide today, and I can draft, um, your legislative priorities, um, based on this feedback, um, and send those out to you by email, um, ahead of then coming back to you in February, uh, to present, um, your official legislative priority documents, and then, of course, using those documents for advocacy purposes. Um, the dates, just so you all know, which I'm sure you have, um, ingrained into your memories, uh, coming up for this next session, um, in 2023, there is an anticipated special session, um, in December that is, uh, set to, um, discuss property tax relief for Hurricane Ian victims and also property insurance issues that were not resolved in the last special session. Um, as far as the 2023 committee meetings, they do begin next week. There are seven weeks of meetings, um, and the last taking place in, uh, February, or the end of February. Uh, the session begins March 7th and officially ends, as of right now, March 5th. Um, you know, in taking a look at this, um, there are only a few, um, agencies that have gotten their priorities out early. Um, so we'll, we will review those, but I am seeing a little bit of a shift in how they're approaching, how they're, um, you know, promoting their priorities. They're very focused, they're direct, they're simple, straightforward, um, wanting to kind of limit, um, what is kind of put out there as far as, you know, consolidating what is really important to the commission, um, and to use that, uh, to get the attention of legislators. So, for, when I put this together, there were only two that I found that we really kind of rely on or look at in development purposes. Um, in, since then, um, the Florida League of Cities has also put theirs out, which was hot off the presses sometime between Friday afternoon and this morning, which is the piece of paper I added to your desk. Um, for Forward Pinellas, um, theirs is in draft form, um, as of their last legislative meeting, um, and they've got, you know, again, you know, really focused, um, topics: strong local communities, safe and effective transportation, robust citizen participation. Of course, they have items under that that kind of advocate for each of those pieces, but again, they're consolidated from what we've seen in years past. Um, the same with the 1,000 Friends of Florida, who has been a great resource, um, to me. They have amazing legislative webinars, legislative action follow-up, um, and then, you know, feedback as far as their position on, um, upcoming bills. Their priority statement is, is officially posted on their website, um, and they have it broken down into two sections: funding and policy priorities, um, and a lot shorter, um, than what I've seen, um, you know, even from last year. Um, and then you can see some of their, um, policy priorities here. Um, a lot of workforce housing I'm seeing across the board, um, land acquisition, preservation, historic preservation. Um, and then for the Florida League of Cities, the same, I think, and I know Commissioner Gao and Vice Mayor Torka were both a part of these, uh, committee meetings, but the same guidance, I think, was applied, uh, to those meetings in that this year they asked for each of the five committees to bring forward one priority. Uh, whereas in the years past, we've seen several, I, I call like their book of priorities. Um, so this is what they've come up with. Um, it's, they're now onto one, one page that, the first section of the page is the priorities, um, one from each committee, um, that they developed and they confirmed on Friday. So, this, uh, slide was just to share with you what our, um, one-page, uh, priority, uh, statement looked like last year. Um, we, you know, the front page was really the, the, the pop that we wanted to share with legislators, what your, where your stance is, what, what was the most important to the commission, and then we included those appropriation requests as well. Um, the back page, um, is a little, uh, intense, and I would, I would like to honestly see some, you know, some improvement and consolidation, um, on that section, just as, as you move forward, for the benefit of, um, the commission in approaching legislators. Um, like I said, they're, they're, they want to be able to find your information and your priorities quickly and understand what it is that's most important to you. So, with that, um, we're going to dive right in, and I know this is where we'll have probably the most discussion. Um, what I've done is share the priorities from last year. You can then decide how you want to approach, you want to remove, take away, um, improve. So, um, for home rule, I can't imagine that this is going to change much, um, as, uh, you know, in support of the home rule powers of governance by protecting local self-government to effectively and efficiently respond to and provide for our residents. Um, is there any comment or, um, modifications you would like to see to that?
I don't think so. I, I think we're, we're all in support of that.
I figured. Um, and then when it comes to environment and resiliency, these are just summarized here, the, the, kind of the items that we had included last year, um, alternative energy funding, um, funding for Florida, Florida Forever, regulating single-use plastics, and of course, the, removing the tree pruning, uh, preemption. Um, I haven't seen, um, anything get that specific this year. Um, and it, and this may be an opportunity where, when it comes to something like single-use plastics and tree pruning, that when it, when a bill is brought up, then we can, you can use your position on environment to push, you know, your position.
I have something to add for this, but go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, on the tree issue, you know, they did do some amendment, right? And I mean, um, so basically, um, I mean, what's been the result of that amendment?
Um, I would have to check with Craig to see if he's received more permit requests. Um, there was a shift in, in the language to kind of stop people from being able to go and just take trees out without getting a certified arborist, you know, approval. Um, so...
Because it's like two, right? Sorry to interrupt, but they have to have two. Is it, is it the, because I think, I think it's, they're not required to have this city arborist, but they're required to have two. So, you can't just go to a tree service and have their arborist, which is completely, you know, self-serving to say whether a tree is going to come down or not.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
So, they have to have two, right?
So, I mean, if, you know, obviously, the goal is, you know, tree preservation in general. I think we've seen, you know, that shift, but I'd want Craig to report, you know, more fully on that.
Sure.
I'm not sure, Mayor. I'm not sure what exactly. I know something changed to, to make it...
It's either two separate or the company, the tree company and us, and I don't remember which one it is.
If you want to, I'm sorry, Commissioner, if you want to, carry on, I can find out exactly what that was and come back to it, because that, that might impact this bullet. So, let me find out.
Yeah, I mean, because I guess my take is we're still looking for, you know, get, you know, that we have control, like we can insert ourselves. But I'm just curious as to, is that helping to solve the problem? You know, obviously, some people want us totally out of it versus the other, but at the same time, I just want the problem solved. So...
Right.
It is important to kind of understand how that preemption affected it, and if we, I mean, it's, I think without us being in the middle of it, it's hard to know. That's part of the problem, but we'll see what Craig says.
We'll find out.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add or change for environment and resiliency?
Uh, just a question.
Sure.
Are we limited to those sub-bullets that are on there?
Uh, no.
No?
These are the bullets that were taken from last year's, uh, priorities. So, again, if there's, you know, if there's something really pressing that you, um, are, you know, are seeing or hearing, and you want to push for that, then that's something, um, we can, that's, this purpose is to modify these. Um, I will say, you know, I think there's going to be a big shift in the alternative energy funding. I mean, we're seeing a lot of grants from the federal level, um, with regards to charging stations and so on and so forth. So, um, while I'm not saying it's not a critical priority, um, it may, you know, be, uh, addressed, you know, across the board, so to speak.
And that's if the state actually, what do you call it, accepts or accepts those programs, right? I mean, the state, it, just because there's a federal program doesn't mean, and if it goes to the state level, doesn't mean they will accept it.
Well, and with a lot of that, a lot of those federal grants, too, I mean, we don't have to work through the state. We can apply for those directly.
Right.
So, yeah, my, so my question would be focused on, and this may be covered somewhere else, but, um, specifically, uh, local waterway management. Um, a while back, this, the commission had allocated, I think it was $30,000 to support, uh, continued monitoring of St. Joseph's Sound, and, um, I, I think that that is an effort that, that needs to continue. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, that waterway is still impaired, and, uh, I think, uh, the continued monitoring along with public awareness is going to be important to, um, uh, the future of that area. Um, the other one related to that would be, and this is a little bit more of a difficult one, but, uh, we're seeing a rising incidence of red tide, and, uh, red tide mitigation efforts, um, I, I think needs, need to be reviewed and, uh, subsequently implemented where it makes sense.
So, on the water quality thing, that's something that we partner with the county on?
Okay.
So, that wouldn't necessarily be on this list, I don't think?
Okay, okay.
Um, it would probably be more of the results of whatever that shows in the mitigation of the testing itself, but I don't think we will have that ready. But on the red tide, probably would be a good idea to kind of understand. I mean, the county is the one that takes care of that, and then they work with the state, but doesn't mean we can't. Many cities have red tide, and the state does step in in some way. I just don't know exactly how. So, maybe between now and February, you can kind of gauge the, what is that process if the state gets involved, so that whatever statement, if we do make a statement about it, we're stating it according to the state's process. You know, you know what I'm saying?
And I mean, there, you do, I mean, obviously, you have the opportunity to promote, you know, preservation and protection of your local waterways and as, as a more general statement, and then, you know, using that then for advocacy when we start to see bills come up, you know, working with the county, working with these, you know, Department of Environmental Protection, working with those agencies who are going to be, and I know 1,000 Friends of Florida, I think, had... and I know 1,000 Friends of Florida, I think, had red tide on their list. You know, working with those agencies, kind of following, you know, they're very helpful when they're tracking, you know, important bills, and then obviously.
Well, and it really is, if you think about it, it's, it's not even about the red tide mitigation after it happens. It's about, it's about placing regulations that stop it from happening. Because a lot of it is, not all of it, I mean, some of it's natural, you know, but, but a lot of it is coming from, you know, the nitrogen and the different things that are in the waterways, as we saw a couple of years back when that was the phosphorus plant or whatever, you know, all of those things. And so it's regulation. But if you will just look to Commissioner Walker's point to see where it goes from, between the county efforts versus the state efforts, and so that we know what the language should be.
Absolutely.
No, thank you.
Any, anyone?
Anybody else on environment?
The waterway was on my list.
Okay.
And the testing that we're doing with the county, that's, that's a four-year program, was that a four-year program? Does anybody recall?
Yeah, that seems about right.
Yeah, I think it goes, but I think we've been doing it for eight.
Yes.
And possibly, actually, I think it's been 12. I really do, because I think we have like a lot of history. I mean, I remember us entering into this partnership, because I think Clearwater is involved.
Pretty much everybody.
Yeah, you know, we're looking at our little piece of the pie, but I mean, I think it's happening everywhere.
This might be a sidebar, but I noticed that Jorge has been sending out emails.
Yeah.
Regarding red tide, I don't know if that's new or.
It is new. It's just started happening.
Right, this bloom now, it's the time of year, right? And we sent them out last year as well, or the year before that, when, you know, it's present in the South County right now, in small quantities, but we're keeping a really close eye on it. And as you know, when we had the bloom here, and we did have fish kill, we picked it all up every day. Our employees went out and picked up the fish kill, which was.
Because the county was deployed everywhere.
Right, we incurred costs there, so it's a good conversation to have, because we'll do that again. It's, it has a direct impact on our economy.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first time I saw Jorge's notice, I'm like, I feel my heart jump out. Like, you know, that's not bad.
Me too, he's getting that from Kelly and.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
You know, the only thing I wanted to throw out there for environment, and I'm going to look at you, because we've kind of unofficially appointed you our liaison to our local energy company, and that is.
They got some new issues on the table now, don't they? Based on what happened in North Carolina, that's pretty awful.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that might be, you know, safety of our infrastructure might be something. But I also, I also want to mention that I think it would be a good year to start talking about, you know, we want to get the state to push the Florida Service Commission to push harder on undergrounding. I mean, we've said this over and over, and every time we have a storm, you know, after that terrible, you know, lack of electricity we had during Irma in 17, where everybody was out anywhere from four to seven, eight days, including me, was miserable. And it can be life-threatening to many, and it certainly hurts our local businesses. So I think it would be worthwhile making a mention of that. I don't know what else you've got going. I don't need to wordsmith the language right now, but if you all are okay, I'd like to ask Commissioner Franny maybe to look at what's happening and maybe work with Nicole Kraft some language to bring back for our final approval in February. Is that okay?
No, that's fine, actually, because, I mean, we do talk about this in Jorge's night here, but, you know, in our discussions with Duke, and of course, I think it's, you know, we've asked the questions based on the storm history in other parts of the state. You know, how do you look at this? How do you analyze the fact that, you know, if it was undergrounding, what would be the effect of? And of course, you know, some of the structures are still above ground, even though the wires are under, so it's complicated. But, yeah, I'd be happy to look at that and continue the discussion.
And really, it's about giving the Florida Service Commission, you know, they have very strict rules to follow. Jennifer and I learned when we went up and spoke before them, and I couldn't believe that we were the only people there after Irma to speak about undergrounding, I mean, and regarding the performance. I mean, I was shocked, but this is how unnoticed it goes. And they had, what we learned is they have very strict rules. One of the rules, and I don't know the exact language, states that they oversee all of the energy companies in Florida, and they force, or because of their rules, they force every energy company to do the least expensive things so that rates.
Stay low.
Stay low. Well, I'm sorry, if you have to fix 80-year-old infrastructure, 50-year-old infrastructure, there is no way it can be the cheapest. You know, it's like how we just redid our whole water plant after 25 years. Why? Because it's a life, health, and safety issue. We need that type of thing being treated with our electrical infrastructure, and we need the Florida Service Commission's hands to not be tied anymore. So however your language is, it's release, release the lang, you know, whatever, I'm not going to wordsmith it, but you get my point.
So, I mean, I think it's great, because, you know, I think it's the same issue, not to draw a comparison, but I just read this great, great article about the rail situation in the U.S. And it's, it's interesting how, again, there's like seven major rail companies, and they're driven by this process that's cut labor, that's kind of, you know, you know.
Same thing.
Perfect time, whatever, and so you have a lot of unintended consequences by this kind of very focused look, and all the company shareholders are focused on that, because it saves, you know, it gets more money back into the pockets of. And I think, again, it's creating an environment where you're looking holistically and making sure like the whole system's being reviewed, not just the protection of the shareholders, so.
Right.
If I may.
We'll try to come up with some.
If I may.
I don't want to have a debate on the rail strike.
No, got it.
Sorry.
You want to talk about rails?
Yeah.
No.
So, so the Public Service Commission obviously then makes sure that all the costs are covered because of the price, how they do the pricing.
They do.
And so I guess, I mean, we're having a non-binding, right now, our community, I've asked for a non-binding solution for the undergrounding, but it's going to, I have no idea when we're going to get it, probably not for another three months, we've asked for it before. It's very, very expensive, incredibly expensive, we don't know how much, we still don't know how much. But whenever it comes about, whatever that dictation is, from the Service Commission to each one of the, each one of those organizations, they then are going to price accordingly. And they cover, they cover capital expenses and they cover, you know, operating expenses. So, you know, it can be, it can also be very, very difficult for some communities to deal with, because their costs can go up just so significantly, and it's so difficult. Look what it costs us over here, we decided not to do the undergrounding, didn't we?
On Skinner, we're getting another estimate, but.
How much was that estimate, if I may ask, just for some people can hear?
It was like 1.4 or something like that?
Just to do.
Right, it's huge.
Do 2,000 feet or something.
Right, yeah.
Yes, we need to encourage, but we need to.
But it does, as Commissioner Franny said, it's got to be targeted to where it does the most good, you know? And, and it's not just electricity, because look at the problem we have. If you look at the last couple of outages, last couple of storms, the tropical storm we just had, and then Ian. If you look at the outage map, what did we see in the outage map? Those areas with the electricity on the south side, with the electricity in the backyards that we were trying to get fixed, but because all these other utilities are on those poles, getting them all to coordinate, it didn't happen. That also needs to be mentioned, because here we are, for sustainability purposes, for a benefit for our own residents, we worked out a deal with Duke Energy and none of them else. So there has to be something, some kind of regulation that forces cooperation. How that works? Because it forces it to be way too expensive, and it forces you to negotiate with four different companies or whatever. It's, it's really ridiculous. Sorry, go ahead.
In that area, Mayor, if I may, a portion of the Duke infrastructure was, in fact, transferred to the front of the yard. And what remained on the poles were the other utilities, the cable and that type of thing, but a portion of that area was undergrounded.
But if you look, it was those exact areas that had the largest outages during those last two things. And I was shocked, really shocked, like 300 and some homes.
That's great.
At a time.
Wasn't part of the reason that they needed to get easement granted to them by the homeowners?
Yes, and they were untrust, you know, they didn't trust what was happening. But, but we would have kept going with that if we had had the cooperation of those other. You know, why are you going to grant an easement for your electricity to go in your front yard when you're still going to have these ugly poles and other lines in your backyard? I mean, part of the benefit, besides continuity of your service, is to get those ugly poles and lines out of your trees and people going in your backyard to work on this stuff, you know, in your backyard. That's a, it's a secondary benefit as far as we're concerned, right? But, so, anyway.
So I will say, you know, in looking at the, some legislation passed last year, there was a lot of funding set aside for resiliency efforts and the development of a resiliency commission that was supposed to, you know, be putting together a report. I highly doubt that has occurred yet.
I don't think they've even come close to.
Even starting, right. So, I mean, that is something that I will keep track of too, as the, you know, as the direction is, you know, coming out of that, that new department, I suppose.
Right, so there are additional incentives now that Duke has made available for undergrounding, and so it may make the undergrounding on Skinner a little bit more attainable, and so we are actually getting a binding estimate on how much that will cost now.
Good.
So we're still hoping.
Is that expensive to get, the binding?
Not in relation to the project itself.
I want to say it's like $2,000. I mean, that's.
How much?
Right.
Wasn't it like $2,000 to get it?
I'm not sure exactly.
I think it was $2,000, which in the big picture is nothing, you know.
Okay.
I would have thought more, but, okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, not going on the record, but I'm almost positive it was around $2,000.
That's a lot of work, I do a lot of, a lot of work here.
Okay, next group.
All right, moving on to transportation and infrastructure. Obviously, the funding for the Causeway Bridge and the SR 580 Complete Streets, the continued support of multimodal infrastructure, electric vehicle charging stations, which we briefly mentioned, and then innovative water and wastewater technology.
Okay, who's got stuff?
Well, we'll put the undergrounding in that section, obviously.
Oh, in this section, I thought it would be in resiliency, but that's okay.
I think it would be both, actually, resiliency would be better.
I was thinking it would, I think it might look better.
I totally agree with that.
And focus more, because the one thing I want to say about transportation and infrastructure, well, transportation in general, and I don't know if we want to get specific, I'm going to look at you, I don't know what PSTA's things are. But one of the things that's bothered me is, it's not just about mobility plans that we need funding for, the plans. We need funding for transit, and the state needs to help with this. And it becomes a whole federal thing, and the state doesn't provide enough. The other thing that is totally necessary is PSTA needs a better funding model, and they need to help. But they're the ones stopping them from getting the right funding model to get transit in our county. So I don't know, again, I'm going to look at you. And again, maybe it's one of those things that you talk to PSTA, find out what, you know, I know you're on those subcommittees, and maybe work with Nicole on something. But I mean, we have to tell the state, it's not just planning tools, it's not just charging stations, it is transit. We can't get cars off the road if we don't get better transit in this county, the most densely populated county that we have.
So, Mayor, I know you're on Forward Pinellas and Commissioner Gow with PSTA.
It's all planning stuff, though.
Right, a lot of, I mean, a lot of this transportation issue, I mean, while we can, you know, promote, you know, routes within our county, I mean, it is a regional issue. So, you know, and each area has their own, you know, transit, you know, organization or company, and that's kind of where something like Forward Pinellas, who's looking more, you know, regionally on how we can collaborate on improving just the entire area and movement between those areas.
But if you look at Forward Pinellas, there's nothing there talking about transit funding. It's talking about planning funding, it's talking, it's very broken up. They are a planning agency, they're not an implementation agency. PSTA is, and the biggest thing, problem I see from being on Forward Pinellas, from having been on PSTA for nine years and ending as vice chair, and being on now the Tourist Development Council, one of their top five issues from all of their Visit St. Pete Clearwater partners was we have terrible transportation transit in this county, and knowing how many cars. So I just feel like funding four projects to improve our transit, not just roads. I mean, FDOT is doing a great job on state roads. This is about transit and getting a sustainable funding model for transit in this county. And I know that that's very centrist and very specific, but I mean, we have got to tell people that this is, we're getting affected. What was the top three items in our city? Traffic, 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 traffic. And then, you know, they blame overdevelopment, they blame the traffic on overdevelopment, and that's not the case. I'm not saying it doesn't contribute, but I mean, I just feel like we have to start advocating for this thing.
Keep in mind that it's much about jobs.
It is.
And it's a much, you know, employees who have to get to their jobs is a huge issue in this county.
Right, and getting.
It's the most critical issue about having a better transportation system, right?
Which will roll into your workforce housing, off the road.
Exactly, so I, I don't know what that statement should be, but for me, it's not about planning, it's about funding actual transit. And, and it is about getting a sustainable funding model for PSTA, because if that doesn't happen.
So I will say, I had the benefit of attending the Florida League of Cities, two of their legislative meetings, one last Thursday. And there was a lot of discussion on the language for this, and it's listed in here in their mobility plans. And while they do mention plan, I'm going to skip over that part.
No, no, I read it, that's why I like, it's all about planning.
Well, and then it, but says, "to provide a clear and concise regulatory framework for Florida cities to acquire, construct, and implement both traditional and alternative modes of transportation."
Regulatory framework, that's a, that is a big bunch of words that, and I understand that, especially Florida League of Cities is trying to accommodate everybody. And I totally appreciate that, and that doesn't mean we can't talk about that. I think we have to be bold and go for the specific things our county needs, which directly affects us.
I agree.
We've just been dealing with this way too long. But maybe you, with Nicole and Brad, can work on some, I think we need specifics, and I think we need to be really strong on it.
Thank you. So that kind of encompasses what would potentially have been listed previously as multimodal infrastructure, and then obviously, we talked electric vehicle charging stations. For the funding, I know there was a request that, or a grant that went through the county. Unfortunately, I don't know where that stands at this point, I believe that was just for design. We haven't heard anything that I'm aware of, but we can continue, obviously, to request that. And then the last bullet on innovative water and wastewater technology, does anybody have any feedback?
I mean, it all sounds good. If you feel like it's getting too long, the one thing I don't want to lose is number one, which is fun, it's not number one in importance, but number one, that's the Dunedin Bridge improvements. We may be able to, no, I think we need to leave Honeymoon Island on there one more year, because we're still working on the roundabout there, and, you know, they're just taking their sweet time on all that. And the 580 Complete Streets.
Are they going to fund the roundabout?
They should, half of it's on their property, but no, they want the city or the county to do it, and the county doesn't want to do it, and we're certainly not doing it, so we're still working on all that.
Well, as their number one visited state park in the entire state.
Exactly.
We gave them, they should be giving them back.
Any, so any, is there anything that you would like to add to this bullet or topic? I will say, it could, this could, I did add, I did add one thing on your behalf for discuss. I will say, it could, this could, I did, I did add one thing on your behalf for discussion, which is on the next slide, but it could possibly fall under this transportation and infrastructure, is the discussion about gas tax.
Yeah, I saw that on Forward Pinellas, no?
Well, I mean, a lot of, a lot of folks are talking about it, because obviously, as we shift to electric vehicles, the gas tax is funding, you know, maintenance of, of infrastructure of roads, which obviously, all vehicles are using, but not necessarily supporting, so I think there's some discussion there, and again.
Is that on the Forward Pinellas list, is that, wait, I saw that, it's not on the FLC list?
Was there a bill last year that started out with that, do you recall?
I'd have to go back and look, I'm, I.
I don't remember that.
I want to say that there was something, but I don't know that it made it very far, but I'd have to, I'd want to confirm.
Well, the gas tax too, part of the problem with the gas tax, and I, I don't know, I, I don't know where it comes down in the actual law, but at the state level, the gas tax has an inflationary factor, I'll call it. And at the local, and, and the way it's written, I believe, at the county level, because it's the county that collects it, it doesn't. So, it's really easy when the, when the state wants to have, you know, gas tax free weekend, when the gas prices are up and all of that, because they have a annual or biannual, I don't know, again, I don't know all the details, but they get like a CPI kind of a thing. They don't have that at the county level, so I don't remember the gas, what I just saw in our earlier staffing on the gas tax, but it, I mean, I would think that we would want them to adjust that, to make that, but they're not going to do it right now with higher gas prices.
Well, that and inflation, it is Forward Pinellas, they, they say state, the creation of a statewide pilot program to tax automobiles based on vehicle miles traveled, VMT, ensuring sufficient roadway funding.
Yeah, and how do you do that? I don't even know how you do that, how do you know what, how many miles a car has traveled, I mean, that sounds like bureaucracy too.
It would almost be more like akin to the, you know, the, the Sunpass, the, the.
Oh, yeah, nobody's going to want, nobody's going to want that thing in their thing where people will know exactly where they are at all times.
Well, I, I know I don't get one, I just get.
And I'm not like conspiracy theorist, but I wouldn't want that. Anyway.
So, just, I just wanted to put it out there, as something that, you know, I, I'm hearing about more.
Yeah.
So, that is, I put, I did put it in finance and taxation, but it can kind of, there's a few places it could go. I feel like some of the, these items that were in finance and taxation, you know, I, I felt like I took what was done previously and tried to refine it and improve it, and some of these items, if you don't feel strongly about them, or want to focus, you know, on something that is really important to you all, then that's where I would.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly about any of it, but like the communication services tax, that was last year, do we still need it on there?
I, I don't, I don't know that there's much discussion, I haven't seen anything, but again, you know, as, as, as remaining agencies start to put their, you know, their items together, I mean, it's something that the Florida League of Cities, I think, has talked about for a long time, is something they want to try to push and advocate for, but it's just hasn't gone anywhere.
Well, on the, on your Florida League of Cities thing, I saw something, what did it say?
I don't think there's any harm in leaving it there myself.
Property tax protections, the Florida League of Cities supports legislation that maintains an equitable property tax system while preserving a municipality's ability to fund public infrastructure, yada yada, any further erosions or exemptions? I mean, if we were going to do anything, that's what should be there, you know?
Property tax.
Finance and taxation.
Okay, and I can, you know, I can look at too, you know, what, what the communication or any of these other items, what that is looking like for this year, and if it's even something.
Yeah, because I don't see anything there.
If it's not, I think if it's not going to be fruitful for you to, you know, push.
Right, let's not have it.
Right.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to jump to municipal administration.
Before you continue, I do have an answer from Craig, I want to circle back to tree, and I'll read it into the record, it's, it's on my phone, says, this is Craig. The state law was revised July 1st, 2022, they clarified the word documentation, which now requires, the word documentation, which now requires an onsite assessment performed by an ISA certified arborist using best management practices, tree risk assessment, second edition, so they, they qualified the word documentation, right? And there's, there are other things here, so sorry, this is a bit of a long, long text. Next, they clarified what residential means, residential property no longer includes things such as duplexes, triplexes, apartment complexes, condos, vacant land, it particularly applies only to single-family homes that have a certificate of occupancy actively used for single-family purposes. Next, they changed the phrase posing a danger to persons and property to the phrase, to the phrase posing a danger to, sorry, posing a danger to persons and property, to a tree poses an unacceptable risk if removal is the only means of practically mitigating its risk below moderate, below moderate, this is determined by tree risk assessment procedures outlined in the best management practices. So, I don't really understand that, we're going to.
So, so a tree, so if, if a tree is, you know, a homeowner is wanting to remove a tree because of a limb, then the arborist then should, that should make the suggestion that they just trim the limb to take it down to a moderate risk, then.
In a different way.
Okay, and then he says, finally, I forgot to include for residential property, it should be detached building, and that is why multifamily is no longer included in the preemption, so.
So, it's not saying to arborists.
No.
I had that completely wrong, maybe at one point they were talking about that.
It wasn't that you had it completely wrong, it says an arborist, an ISA arborist or a Florida landscaper, so I'm sure it was just, like you said, some alteration at some time, it wasn't a second backup, it's one or the other.
So, that doesn't, that doesn't sound like a whole lot of help, does it? I think we leave the tree there.
I guess the question is, between what we had and what, what it is now, what Craig really feels, you know, in terms of what we still need, what's the gap? In terms of protect, I mean, what the goal is.
Right, so we'll circle back with, with our arborist and, and include something, whatever that is.
Right, to make this. And I'm sure he's a member of, one of the associations here in Florida that would be addressing that too, they probably maybe have some further language or whatever.
And, and last year, you know, what I did was I took some of your, you know, I took these items, I, I shared with, with staff the bills that were coming up to make sure they provided their feedback, because, you know, obviously, I'm trying to cover lots of different disciplines. But I will say, I think it does, it, it did improve to the extent that, you know, I think large developments that are coming in and we're just basically allowed to clear cut without permitting, that is now taken away, so that part of the process then still has to go through permitting.
Right.
And also, I received confirmation that the Duke binding estimate is $2,100. I guess staff is watching this meeting.
I'm sure they are. Yay, I don't know why everybody leaves.
They just don't want to be in here and feel the pain and have to keep their face on.
If the chairs were more comfortable.
Yes, yes, there you go.
Okay, so, you're going to look into the whole finance and taxation thing and make sure that piece of it, and look at the property tax thing, municipal administration.
Again, these were, these were rollovers from, from last year.
Short-term rentals needs to stay.
Short-term rentals was still a topic, and Vice Mayor Torga, you can feel.
And the cybersecurity, you've got to be, y'all got to be talking about that, given our recent hack.
Well, not only that, but, I mean, there has been a lot of funding towards cybersecurity, not just infrastructure, but also training and reporting structures that are now in place, even from some, not just from the infrastructure bill, but then also from the law that was passed. So, I mean, there's been a lot of movement on that, and whether you want to, you know, continue to push for that, or we can, you know, I.
Well, you all have to tell us if there's some other thing that's necessary, I mean, you know, last, was it last year they passed the law, or the year before, or whatever it was, that cities could not pay ransom?
Exactly, July 1st of this year.
Yep.
Okay, and so, we didn't pay ransom, and we also purchased insurance to cover us in case of a cyber attack, in order to cover the costs of fixing these kinds of problems.
Prior to.
Yeah, yeah, prior to this happening, yeah, this, so, we were certainly prepared as we could have been, I think, plus, Michael's been doing all that training and everything, so it, it is what it is, but is there further?
Yes.
All right, well, you all, you all talk about it, what you might want it to say, I think you would, all of you may have a much better understanding.
Yes.
Of what we need to actually say if something different than this.
Yes.
Okay, and then the mental health services to children and adults, I mean, we can just leave it there for posterity if you want, or.
And I will say, Vice Mayor Torga, there, oh, they did include short-term rentals. It's still on, it's still on Florida League of Cities. I don't know that it'll ever go away.
Very serious issue throughout, and it's a single, single issue from the administration, whereas last year, big time was cybersecurity, so.
Right.
And then look what happened with cybersecurity throughout the state, throughout our own county.
Yes. About the nation.
Didn't work out real good, but, but, yeah, we need to, we all need to keep a focus on, on, on both of those issues, and, and they're fundamentally, one of them is, one of them is strongly home rule, so.
Yeah. Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, I don't, the short-term rentals, I don't think that that's been completely addressed adequately.
Oh, no, they're going to keep coming at it, depending on which new people have been elected and what their proclivities are, but, you know, it's going to keep happening.
Right, but, and, and I will say, though, having, having that really strong one-issue focus, you know, out of that committee, you know, is looking to really push, you know, and get some action on it.
That was, that was the purpose, so that we try to finish this and get preemption, it's preemption.
Can't shut it off, sorry, just complaining.
Preemption.
Yeah.
Okay, that looks good.
You keep talking, I'm going to go.
When it comes to education, we had funding arts and culture, which we did see a big improvement last year in the, the legislative budget, I think allocated more than they had ever allocated towards that, so I guess that's a yay or a nay.
Good.
Okay. Economic development, we talked specifically about incentivizing film development, as well as just general economic development, anything there?
I'm fine with that.
So, it said incentivize economic development, investment, and workforce development, and create a competitive film environment.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Was that one issue or was that two issues?
Kind of two issues, but it's all under economic development, if film then can promote development.
What about film promoting development? So, film development or film promoting development?
A competitive film environment.
Well, creating a competitive film environment.
Yes, that's absolutely, yes, okay, I see it, yep, and I still think we need to keep that there, I mean.
Yeah, except I'd sure like to see the ones that come out that actually got filmed, dear.
Yeah, but you know what?
Just saying.
Those weren't even state-supported, though, those were locally supported, but yes, Sue, go get on them.
A lot of you are still waiting for that Hallmark movie.
I know, that's, that's what we were talking about.
And that was like, I think the county put in like 600 grand or something for that, I'm thinking, okay, it should still be, I get bugged constantly by people that were extras in it.
Well, where do we, sorry, where do we, I think we're pretty sure we left it, they are trying, they are working with Netflix. Sue heard her name.
See, Netflix, right, they're working with Netflix?
On the film.
Yeah, come on, this is the best question.
Yes, first of all, can you hear me?
Hit the button, make sure the button, I don't know.
It is now, during the, the cyber attack, we got an email from the producer and the Film Commission, and they said they were meeting with Netflix and actually some others.
Streaming, yeah.
Yes.
Is this Taste of Love?
This was Taste of Love, yes, yes, so.
They felt, it sounded like they felt pretty confident that it.
They felt very confident, so we're hoping to hear them on, and they just had that.
Netflix is a big deal.
Yeah, it's a very big deal, so.
It works.
Yes. So, stay tuned.
So, you'll let us know right away, I mean, because this is a matter of crisis and importance.
It's a very big deal.
It is a big deal, actually, and to me, that's the county's money, you know, they, they put a lot of money at work, I mean, so it's like, it ought to be on TV.
Well, and the bed tax pays for that, in case anybody's looking, why are my tax dollars going to film, the bed tax goes to pay for that, so those are, I mean, nine out of 10 times, those are people from outside of Pinellas County that are here staying, which is, you know.
90%?
Eighty to 90% is from outside of Pinellas County, yeah. Okay, so economic development, right? And then, oh, sorry, I forgot about you over there.
It, it mentions the incentive economic development in, in film, if we're not talking about film, what other incentivizing for economic development would we be looking for?
Well, it says here on our old list, I mean, you're, she's summarizing here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm speaking for you, Nicole, if you go to our, I'm looking at our last year's, it says incentivize economic development, comma, investment in workforce development, comma, and create a competitive film environment. It doesn't say any other economic development, but it is a little bit more specific than what that is.
Okay.
And Jeff, I don't know what's, I mean, that was an issue with Florida League of Cities last year in the Economic Development Committee, where that, I think it was like their, their issue last year, or one of their two issues, and it, because, you know, they had, like, they were, wanted to be off of a couple of things they'd been on before. But again, it was just creative methods by which we can make sure we're creating a good environment for, for businesses to come in, but I can't right off the top of my head come up with a few examples.
And that's what I'm wondering, are there any roadblocks out there now that we're aware of that would address that, that would be a priority?
Well.
And I don't know what those.
I don't know the specifics.
Makes use of development, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I don't know the specifics, but I can tell you that, I mean, if you look at the last couple of years of bills when it comes to economic development, what they're trying to do is take any local control away and hand it to the business, and in theory, you might think that's a good thing, right, less regulation? But what they should be doing is providing the incentives to encourage businesses to do things and let us still have our home rule. So, you know, again, maybe there's some language that kind of specifies that, you know, or gets it a little bit closer to understand, stop just taking all of our local regulations away, but incentivize the economic development so that there is a balance. That's, I mean, if it were me, that's how I would say it.
And, and I, yeah, because just looking at the way it's worded, I, it wasn't giving me enough direction on a talking point.
Sure.
Okay.
And there, I mean, you know, as, as others come in front of you, I mean, I, I can't, the, the property that obviously comes to mind is Coca-Cola, and what, you know, the kind of incentives can be offered to have somebody come in, now whether that's from the state to be able to support that, I mean, that's, that's a perfect project of being able to use, you know, tax incentives to attract somebody there.
Yeah.
Okay, then in public safety, it was very, you know, broad, we didn't see a lot of, of bills published in regards to the protection and safety of, of our first responders, I think this is just a, you know, again, one of those items that was rolled over, and, you know, continues to be, you know, in the forefront of our community to keep our first responders safe. So, if you want to modify, change.
I mean, I think we leave it there, but I also think we should probably have a little bit of an open mind when you come back with the things that we have discussed, and if, it doesn't mean you don't support public safety, but I'm, I'm using this as an example.
Right.
Okay, we can remove categories from our list to make the list more manageable and readable and more focused on our this year's priority. You know, but maybe we wait until we see it all together and kind of, because like you said, this is a pretty big list, and.
It is, and I don't, I don't think that any community or, or any city is, is going to not, obviously, want to protect their safety.
Support public safety and, right.
Public safety, that's just almost a given, that, it just might not need to be on this.
I'm trying to remember why we even popped that in there, because to me, it is kind of a given, but was there something in our head that we wanted, or we thought they weren't doing?
You know, I, I kind of was looking at what was done previously and not try, I didn't want to change it too much, but kind of keep the flow of where your priorities were, but as we are looking at what. You know, I, I kind of was looking at what was done previously and not try, I didn't want to change it too much, but kind of keep the flow of where your priorities were, but as we are looking at what, you know, what's coming out of new agencies and as far as really being focused, this just seems to be one of those that can...
Well, what was on there was particularly in roadway incidences while serving in the line of duty.
Right.
So that might, had to do with the...
There might have been issues, yeah.
Well, the current issues in our...
Yeah.
Pullover law, what do you call it?
Yeah, yeah, the pullover law, yeah.
You're supposed to change lanes.
And that could have exactly been what hap...
Yeah, well, we need to train people on that.
Yeah.
People are terrible about that.
But the important thing is, is when you have a one-pager, or an explanation, even one-pager, you want it to be concise and not have a lot of fluff. So.
And then the last, which I think is, is on everybody's minds,
Yeah.
across every agency and, and, you know, in our legislature, is affordable housing, and how to support those housing projects, not just through funding, but also through addressing zoning regulations.
Well, and the only one thing I'm gonna add to this is, and again, I think maybe you and Jennifer and Bob can talk about this. What we've seen in our own struggle to get from both the county but the state is there is a requirement, and again, I don't know exactly where it falls, that you have transit lines with 15-minute service close by in order to get higher points in your ranking of a project. Are you kidding me? There's what, you know, a handful of places in Pinellas County that have 15-minute service? So you're, you're...
You're, you're pigeonholed into...
You are, and so, you know, until they improve transit service here, focus on the darn problem of workforce and affordable housing and low-income housing and all those different categories. You know, stop making it a bureaucracy. That might work in other counties, so if there's language that says, unless you're in a county that, that, you know,
That, or if you...
that has a certain percentage or less of 15-minute service where it's not a thing, I mean, Florida is probably one of the most worst transit systems in the country.
Or if that's what they want.
For a populated area, for a major populated area.
If that's what they want, they want it to be,
Then fund it.
Then go back and fund it, right.
Right, but, I mean, we're not gonna say that, but, yes.
Yeah.
So we just need to say...
You can say it.
But I mean, I think that's, we, and I'm not exactly sure if that falls in the state law stuff, or the county, or both. I think it's both. To get those grant pieces when we, because we've lost, we already lost that project that Union wants, if not twice, because of that 15-minute service rule on County Road One.
Well, we'll certainly look into that to see where that requirement, who, who that stands with, and then who you need to lobby to then change it.
And the, we are the most densely populated county here, so in, in the state. I mean, you can't change the development pattern. So if you can't change the development pattern anytime soon, County Road One is never gonna have 15-minute service in certain areas, ever, because it's suburban. It's not urban, unless there's more money. So it's a fait accompli, is the point. Anyway.
Well, but that...
You'll figure some, you guys will look at some language.
That ties perfectly with your initial, you know, comment on transportation.
Yeah, it, it affects everything.
All right, I think we've got some good guidance here. I just wanted to share with you the new Senate-elect Senator Pasadomo, she's out of Naples. She did craft a letter that she posted right before Thanksgiving, highlighting some of her priorities, which, you know, and good news to us, align with some of the items that we want to advance. Obviously, workforce housing was discussed, environment, resiliency, and both expansion of the wildlife corridor, she's very passionate about, veteran and first responder benefits, and obviously, ensuring fiscal responsibility, which I think we all, all feel in an administrative capacity, and then furthering education. So just wanted to share those with you. And then as we look ahead, again, monitoring the priorities, or, or providing you with the priorities, watching bills, providing feedback and advocacy, and then coming back in February with your official priorities, and then also probably, like we did last year, highlighting some of those bills that have been filed that we really want to take a stand on. And then lastly, the Florida League of Cities has their Legislative Action Days from April 3rd to the 5th. It's a great opportunity to kind of, you know, tag along with their connections and, and meet with different legislative leaders and so on to, to kind of get in front of them, not just with our own local leaders, but with leaders that are, you know, committee leaders and, and Senate and legislative leaders.
And would you do us a favor and make sure that Andrea adds that to our calendars, please?
I sure will.
And it's on here.
Yeah, it's on there, but I assume she uses that, that's why we've been dinged 1,000 times while we're sitting here.
Well, now you stopped yourself.
I did.
I won't get on in the list.
Stop it.
Nope.
Stop talking.
That concludes the presentation. Are there any other questions or comments about priorities?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, you're allowed to talk now.
Okay, cool. So, well, we talked about following up on the tree permit, so I'll make a general statement, that'll be specific. So, you know, every year when, you know, they kind of preempt us in home rule areas, you know, there's this scream hurled around the world from all of us at local government, which just in principle, you know, we know best, and I believe that to my heart, you know? Even though I think sometimes there's consistency issues that they try to deal with, but there's been several, like the, the, there's, and I forget what it was called, like where you could do more stuff if you had your business at home. I forget what that bill was, and they passed it, and, and, and there was a lot of uproar from cities that, like, that's hard, and I still say that's, that we should be making those calls.
Yeah, home businesses.
Yeah, home businesses, and, you know, anonymous callers for code, which I get on both sides of that, but I've seen a few things lately where I get why somebody's terrified to actually report something. I'm just, I, I guess I'd like to make sure that we stay on our radar of what's happening with some of those. Like, because, because they got put into law, and I, I just want to see what, like, what's the true impact that we're having, you know, we know the trees. We saw the tree thing immediately, I mean, people were just cutting down trees right and left, and so I'm just curious to see on some of these other things, and those are the ones that come in mind for me.
Especially the counter enforcement thing. You'll remember, because Chris was still here, when we asked about that and how it was affecting our calls, and, you know, I know Chris left, and then we were short-staffed and yada, 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 but I mean, I, I thought somebody was sort of keeping some track as to reports now versus reports pre that, and I, I'm sure there's something to be done with that, something that can be pulled, but I think we should see that to understand it, because if you remember, Jennifer, what we were talking about, and this is not legislative for this document, but it's, what we were talking about is, we've always said we're not proactive, we're reactive,
Mm-hmm.
but it was a sense of should we be more proactive, and I already know some of that's happening, trust me, I know what's happening. Okay, but how much more, and, and again, that's, it's a philosophy and a sort of a overall policy thing, but it's also an admin thing that I'm not trying to step on. So, I, I do think it's important to kind of understand that difference between before and after, you know? And so that it actually warrants certain changes that maybe have been made or need to be made.
Well, I just know, like, with the home business situation, like the Economic Development Committee that I was on for Florida League, the following year after it got put into practice, you know, they were like, hey, let's go after that, let's get them to change it, da-da-da, it was wrong, which, I'm not saying they were wrong, but there were several of us that were like, first of all, it's rare they're gonna go back to something they just did, because they had to fight. So the better strategy is to follow the data, like, what's the impact of it, and collect that as communities so that then we have data to show, you know, this is the real impact of what you're doing. So that's why I just don't want to lose sight on some of these things, where we really were against them putting something in, and it has an impact. I mean, I have to look at vacation rentals and say, you don't know our community like we do. Like, to me, there might be a few areas I would like to expand a little bit, and it would make sense, but we're not touching anything. You touch anything, then we're just gonna put it all over our community, and we know that's not what our community wants.
Right, so we don't even discuss it.
Right, so, but, so, so again, by intervening, they can cause, they can even go against their own, you know, goals. So, anyway, I just, I just think it's important that we track some of those, so that when it is time, that it's gonna come back, and it's like the tree one, that we have data.
Right, and that's like my favorite word, so.
Data.
Yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
The problem with the tree, though, is, I'm sorry, Mayor, the problem with the tree is that you had asked for that information, and we could not, you know, because we're not involved in that anymore, you know, I mean... Yeah, no, it was hard data to get. I, I mean, we got some in terms of impact, but some of it was just, you know, like Craig would know, because he knows the community. He'd drive by and be like, I mean, I knew.
When did that happen?
I drove by when they cut down this tree.
Next to your house. I watched it happen every day.
The whole neighborhood was outraged, and it was for no good reason.
Well, and I think some of, you know, some of those, some of those, you know, are costly solutions. If you want to look at, you know, overall tree canopy over the entire city, you know, that's, you know, a very expensive process to kind of review that map, map it and remap it and kind of see gains and losses, so.
It's actually getting cheaper, though, because you can do it by satellite.
Yeah, so, okay.
So that would, you know, that, that could be a, thanks for... That could be, you know, that, that, there's, I think there's always going to be a tool, now whether you want to, you know, decide to spend, expend funds to, to get the da, that data, then that's where you'll, we'll have to come back, but.
Okay.
And my last comment was, I was noticing the Florida League on the water wastewater plant operator licensure. I'm just curious, are we having issues with that in our own community, and they, because they want to... We're having issues with recruitment. Is that what you mean? Well, just, are we, keeping staffed? Keeping certified operators staffed? We are keeping certified operators, we are, we always struggle with recruitment, though, you know, there's a lot of overtime going on, so they are certified, but like I said, it's hard to recruit.
And I think part of this is speaking...
I'm curious, I'm, I'm interested in this, because, again, I think, you know, hey, God bless our police and our, our sheriff and our fire, but sometimes that broader view of who first responders really are
Right.
is important, and that's a great example of first responders.
Right.
And, you know, we, we have to have licensed workers in water wastewater, so much as depends on it.
Right, so, yeah, extending that designation to them, and then as well as allowing credit for military experience or time served, and then, or being able to utilize retired operators during emergencies, so that, you know, some of that will, would help with recruiting potentially, to be able to kind of fill that, fill that gap.
I have something to offer for that, but I want to let Vice Mayor Torga talk because he's been waiting. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm still talking, I'm sorry.
No, you're not. You're cut off now.
If I may, I'd like to just circle back and, and talk just briefly about, about housing. Because there's lots of words that have been used, and I know that some people are going away from using the word affordable housing, as we all know. The President of the, of the Senate is specifying workforce housing. The Florida League of City is talking about accessible housing. I've talked about remaining housing before, about people being able to remain in their housing, but, in their houses, but, but that's really not, not a focus here. What the focus here is, is how do we make sure that we have people that are, that, that, that need a place to live, that are servicing the community? And I guess that's the main point of, of some of this conversation, not necessarily remaining. I'm talking about people that are, are, are in a community and their costs are going up significantly and losing their insurances and et cetera, et cetera. And of course, that's what they're meaning about right now. On the accessible housing from the League of City, it supports legislation that requires all, now, this is a great point that you made before. They're talking about the funding first. They're saying requires all money from the Sodowsky State and Local Housing Trust Fund be used only for Florida's affordable housing programs that are targeted to meet the needs of workforce housing, and then including homeownership and rental availability. So that Florida League covers my stuff for certain, but all of it, but it does focus on the workforce, but it focuses on where's that money gonna come from, and how's it gonna, how are we gonna get it? We're gonna need more than that, probably.
Well, but they haven't fully funded it in years.
No.
They're just stealing from it forever.
This is true.
So this, that's what this is trying to do.
Yeah, no, and I think that, I mean, I think those statements are important.
So, and I mean, and with, you know, and with, so if you don't mind, I'll just read this one little sentence, you know, from Senator's letter here that she wrote. She said, "If our workers do not have a safe and affordable place to live and raise their families, we will not be able to recruit and retain the workforce we need in the Sunshine State." So that, that's, it's all tied together. So, you know, if we, if we don't have housing to support our workforce and provide them transportation to get where they need to go, I mean, we're talking about, you know, bigger economic issues here, so. And yes, of course, you know, mandating, it's like, there's a, there's a law that collects that funding into the Sodowsky Trust Fund, but it has often been used for other purposes.
Yeah, there's nothing to say it has to stay there.
And, and so this is just a, a kind of a general statement from us. Now, we know there's programs for first responders, for, you know, for fire, for, for police, et cetera, but we need to keep that going so that there is some support for that. We can't lose that part of it. Our, for our state, nor for our, our own personal, our own local communities, municipalities, so I think these were, I think this was kind of well-written here from the Florida League of Cities.
I, I agree.
There was a lot of discussion about that, those words. I was...
I like that word.
Thankfully, I was able to bounce between, I think, four of the committees, because, like, municipal administration, you know, kind of finished their first one quickly, and then I went around, but it was, you know, do we say accessible, do we say affordable, do we say, you know, so...
Trainable, I don't know, I don't know.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the only thing I was gonna say, and again, I, so I know that there, I'm gonna go back to education. I know that the state kind of oversees some of the university and four-year college stuff, right, in, in, in the state. Going back to being able to find the workforce we need and fill our open positions, what I see is a big problem is we, there are any number of occupations that municipalities have, and we have 419 municipalities plus all those counties, right? That have no training programs for things that are out of the engineering field or the planning field, right? I mean, they have the high-grade stuff, or the, you know, water, which is still an engineering-type field. There are a lot of areas, as you know.
So I will say, I, you know, prior to working in the city, I worked for St. Pete College. I saw your shirt today, Commissioner Gao. And, you know, they, they've got, you know, good workforce program, you know, development programs. I, I know one of the, one of the programs they really focused on, you know, when I was there a few years back, was developing linemen. So they, 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 they developed a program, they brought it to fruition, they're producing, you know, linemen. So I think if, you know, if that's a discussion where cities band together, whether you need, you know, the plant operators, that sort of thing, now whether it's SPC or Pinellas Technical College, or whomever it is.
Whatever it is.
But to work with those organizations to say, this is what these municipalities need.
It took us, what, three or four years to find a city clerk?
To find the right one.
Well, that actually had experience.
The perfect one.
Yeah, but, but that had experience.
The amazing one.
Do, do you see what I'm saying? And they're, in order to get your accreditation, you have to go to the Association of City Clerks to get it, or whatever.
And you have to be working in municipal government.
Yeah, I mean, that's wrong.
If I may, ma'am.
There are those kinds of things, and I don't know if we lobby the state to try to get, they should be studying it, not us.
Right.
Right, to try to say, hey, we need at least one of these programs somewhere in the state to help our cities.
We actually are active in the APWA, American Public Works Association, and also in St. Pete College, their Fire Academy.
Yeah, but those are two very different, those are two specified things.
Does the Public Works Academy still exist?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's that.
But it's Public Works.
Well, they, they feed through, though, and we actually have had some successful recruitments due to our...
Code enforcement. Who trains code enforcement people?
In the Public Works Academy.
But do, do you see what I'm saying? We had such a hard... We had such a hard time. These are certification programs, maybe?
There are certification programs, though, for code compliance. And actually, we, we put into place a step program for our code enforcement officers through the Florida, it's FACE, Florida Association of Code Enforcement, actually.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they are there.
Again, they're associations.
I get what you're saying, but they're there.
I'm just saying, you know...
I think, I mean, knowing how the colleges worked, I mean, they were, you know, they were approached, you know, with that need for, for linemen, so if, you know, there's a specific, you know, obviously, they're not going to be able to solve everybody's problems all at once, but, you know, if the local, you know, cities and county have a similar need across the board, you know, to then go to them and say, we want you to develop this specific program.
And I do know that shows, I'm sorry, I've forgotten, Dr. Something's name that runs SPC.
Oh, Will, Dr. Williams.
Yeah. And I mean, I know she's very open to all of that. I do know that. And again, I didn't know if the state looks at any of this kind of data.
They do, well...
To then encourage their, you know, through, hey, yeah, you get your funding every year if you, if you do certain things, you know? I didn't know if that was the avenue for us to take, and it kind of sounds like you're telling me it isn't.
Well, the col, I think the college or the university can develop whichever programs they, they would like to see or need to address in the community. Obviously, they have to go through a process to get that, you know, certified and approved to offer, but that's, you know, some of those come up organically and are brought by the college.
All right, I'm not going to push it. That's one less thing for you to research. Okay, so you're going to come back to us in February and, and kind of revamp some of that? Maybe, maybe you give us also, just based on what you've heard, the recommendations of things to remove for this coming year so that it's a focused list of priorities and that it's clean and...
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Nicole, great job. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
Nicole.
Thank you.
All right. Informational items, we're going to run through this stuff quick. I did not see any emails on commission discussion items. Looking at everybody, I don't see any. Very good. City Clerk's update.
I don't have anything today, Mayor.
Okay, City Manager's update.
We have the written update attached to, to your agenda, and that is actually for September and October, so it's, it's quite thick, and I'm sure you've all read it already.
Okay, any questions for Jennifer? Very good. City Attorney's update, did you have anything? Anybody else? I do have one thing, real quick for her. I know that the City Attorney's Office is working on ordinance review committees, final recommendations to get to us before the end of the year, and one of the things, because they're already looking at similar things, I was just going to ask that they look at, if you guys are okay. We've got a business in the city that's sort of accosting people on the sidewalk to get them to come in, really aggressive sales thing, and we have certain things on our books that sort of address it but don't quite address it, and I just wanted to find out if it's even something we can address. Do you all mind if they spend some time looking at it? I'm not saying you have to approve it or, or even that they come back, they're just going to come back and maybe make a suggestion, if it's even workable. Y'all okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm not naming names.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. I'm good.
Tell what you need.
That's fine, yeah. We're looking at one of the specific chapters, we're looking at, it's Chapter 62, which is sales, so, and it's cover soliciting and...
Yeah.
So we can look at that.
Okeydoke. Anybody else have anything for the City Attorney? Okay, Commission comments on our liaison or anything else? Vice Mayor Trongar.
I actually have nothing, thank you.
Okeydoke. Commissioner Gal.
Uh, la, 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 la. Yeah, there's lots of school stuff going on at the end of the year, so if you have time, support any activities or events you're doing. I know that there's a Chorus Concert tonight, Thursday night is the Band Concert, the 21st, San Jose is putting on their performance, and I've got information on the middle school, I just can't get to my phone right now, so...
Okeydoke.
All kinds of stuff.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Well, I just kind of want to get it done, it's not finalized yet, and Vince is actually doing some more discussions with the Blue Jays, but the Welcome Back Blue Jay event, maybe it might be February 19th, which is a Sunday, and it might be a little different kind of a layout as we've had, one that would actually be more open-housy for the public to come in, and, but also, you know, kind of support, you know, the key supporters. But, anyway, so I just want to get that on your radar, because it's unusual for us to have a Welcome Back Blue Jays February on a Sunday, and so, as soon as I know, I mean, I'm sure, like, I think that probably even, I think it's Thursday, there's going to be discussion at the Blue Jay level about some of it, so I'm thinking that like next week there'll be some finalization of a date. So I want to get that on everybody's radar, and just so you know, that, that is actually the day after Mardi Gras, and then opening day is February 26th, but I know...
Oh, 19th is the day after Mardi Gras?
19th is the day after Mardi Gras.
It's not going to be in the morning, is it?
Uh, no, it'll definitely be in the afternoon and...
Trying to kill us?
Afternoon to evening, well. I think the, the vision that the Blue Jays have of how they want, how they think it could be, you know, improved and better and more inclusive to the community is, is kind of great, and they're talking about, you know, you know, doing a golf cart parade, so everybody get their golf carts, you know, decorated with Blue Jay stuff, which I think is totally cool. But again, it's still, it's a work in progress, so it's not really determined yet.
Sure.
Cool, that's it, that's all I have. Other than thanking the Youth Guild for the tour homes, I went to whiskey tasting. My, I think, I think I'd been to one way long ago, but this was awesome. You know, Bob and Matt did a great job with the Scottish theme, and of course, the money goes to scholarships, the boat parade, thanks to the Boat Club. I know you guys went to the Donald Ross Birthday Event. I did want to put one plug in. If we're going to do Wi-Fi in the marina, I am not of the technical, technical genius to know how we could pipe music through into the marina, but how cool would that be, to be able to pipe music through the marina, you know, for special events and things like that? And maybe some easy listening when John gets all worked up about something, just going to bring his mood down, that kind of...
Elevator music.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I have a lot of work to do, so I appreciate you all being gentle with me today on my first meeting. And yes, this last weekend was an amazing, Dunedin kickoff to Christmas, and it was amazing, so, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just take on to that real quickly, it's just a lot of these events this weekend, the three men on the commission were in attendance. Morning, noon, and night.
Just, just saying.
What are you saying there? Please elaborate.
Saying we missed breakfast with Santa.
I haven't gone to breakfast with Santa since I've been on the dais.
But thanks to our Ruck and Parks people.
Yes.
Because they work, I mean, they work hard all year round.
You little overachievers.
They kill themselves.
Um...
Well, they need a little more, you know, influence from Santa.
Yeah.
We don't need that much.
So I want to thank Parks and Ruck for all the events, but also coming up, you know, we have the Mayor's Council Holiday Luncheon, so thank you, everybody, for committing to go to that.
I'm unable to attend that, and I apologize, but I have a conflict.
I didn't see you, not on the list. I thought you were on the list.
Ellen and the baby are here, they take prayer.
Oh, that's right. Okay. We also have our employee appreciation picnic on Thursday. And then we have Old Fashioned Christmas this weekend, which is, you know, many, many families' favorite. I'm just looking at the calendar here. Certainly sorry to hear about the loss of Sally Parks, we haven't mentioned that.
We haven't, yes, we should have.
Yeah, her celebration of life is on the 11th, it's in our calendars.
It's at the Farm Art Center?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
It is, yeah.
Uh, I'm just looking through to see anything else. That's it, really, for this next week. But thank you all, it was a good meeting. We're getting out early. Can't thank you enough for that.
That doesn't always happen, just saying, especially on the...
No, especially for people who talk a lot.
Well, I'm just taking down him.
You are. Well, it's usually him.
See how they treat him?
I'm usually getting him. So now it's your turn. It, it's something about, you know, let's see, all right, thank you, everybody, appreciate all the efforts. We're adjourned.